Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular school committee for the regular school committee meeting for Tuesday, October 15, 2019. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Coogan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, here.
Mayor Cora.
And if you can, Madam Secretary, for the record, could you please acknowledge in the minutes the presence of Dorothy Barrows, who's our student delegate. Welcome. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio/video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I'd like to ask everybody in attendance to please join the committee in a salute to our flag.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business is citizens' input. Just to remind the public, if you've signed up for citizens' input, each individual will be given three minutes to address the committee as a whole. We'll start off by, first person who signed in this evening is Melissa Costa, 251 Reynard Street, Fall River. Agenda item discussed, CUS Theater. Welcome.
Hi. I'm speaking up today for what I feel has been appeals through the chain of command and to school committee members to please pay attention and have a conversation regarding this program. It's a beloved proven success of a theater arts program that's been referenced in newspapers like The New York Times, The New York Daily News, Seattle Times, CBS News. They give specific examples about the theater program and its impact in an ELT school. I will email you links to those articles later on, and I have statements that some of the kids themselves have written about what the program does for them. The program, as I know it, was started in 2005 by Charlie Jodwin, and I became involved while I was doing a lot of work over at Durfee with the theater company, Callagard. I became the long-term substitute theater teacher, so I thought it made sense to find out what was going on at the middle school, because I didn't know how long I would be at the high school, and assumed there was sort of a feeder system that's in place the way there is for sports. There didn't appear to be, however, I connected with Eric over here and came to see what they were doing and was blown away by the professionalism of the program and the advanced level of the performances. The students were going to and often hosting the Mass Educational Theater Guild Middle School Festival, which Durfee also attends at the high school level. We were hosting schools from all over the state. This was kind of the school that they liked to come in. We could accommodate them. The size and the facilities were up to what they're standard, what they needed for that, for that type of event. If you go to see Durfee's musicals or their METG performances now, the largest component of that company is from this CUS program. However, there are, there's a complete lack of funding for anything that we do at this point. There is no technical assistance. As many of you know, Eric was the longtime technical, he started as a technical director back then, and he carried the program through for the next 10 years. But he also, his background, he was a technical theater guy. He was a Zietarian technical theater director, all of that. So, a lot of the equipment and things that we had in here were Eric's, and when he passed away suddenly three years ago, which was a devastating loss to all of us, a lot of that equipment went back to his widow, rightfully so, but we don't have the resources and/or the finances to bring anybody in on that end. I'm currently directing, choreographing, doing the costumes, getting the rights, raising the funds, permission slips, all of that, and it doesn't exist in any format. We still have to eat ELT periods a week. It used to be a wraparound program where it was myself, Eric, Toby Monte was the musical director, the art teachers were involved. We really were a program, and at this point, it's, it's sort of a theater company, and we're getting a couple of shows done a year, but it's sheer force of will. And I freelance for a lot of different theater companies and whatnot. My background is dance and theater ed. They graciously loaned me a lot of things to get these shows done, and everything goes back exactly the way we found it. Kids need to be in school to be at rehearsal. We just had the fall auditions. We had 50 kids try out for the play. Enough talent and ability that I could have honestly done two casts and give them two performances each, but there aren't the, there really isn't the support or the resources for that. I did propose it and didn't get a lot of feedback on that. I know Gary is struggling, you know, to have enough kids available to work all the events through the technical theater intern program. I regularly have kids show up to the auditions as well that are interested in crew, but there's, there's nobody here to guide them. I'd have to be here five afternoons a week, and it's already a voluntary position at this point. If we invoice for anything, it comes out of the fund that I spend the hours writing grants for and all of that. We are at this point living off of kind of the balance from where we left off with Eric. That was what turned, it was three weeks before opening night of Lion King, so that turned out to be his final directing project. So, a lot, a lot more people came back that had come in the past to see the show, so ticket sales and all of that, a lot of us, people loaned us drops and props and all that kind of stuff under the circumstances.
Ms. Costa, if I can just interrupt.
Yeah, three minutes, sorry.
No, no, I think you've done a great, I think you've done a great job this evening.
Yeah.
And I know that there's going to be some discussion later on in this meeting, and if you have the opportunity to stick around, I think you'll be pleased with the discussion.
Okay.
I thank you this evening for your input regarding the needs in the district, but I think my colleague, Mr. Corey, is prepared to ask the committee to consider some funding for the programs, and that should happen later on in a meeting. So, if you have an opportunity to stick around.
I can, yeah, I can stick around, yep. Again, it's not to pit any one activity over another, what's more valuable than another, but, I mean, you know, I've, I've looked at what we're doing in other areas and the way we're supporting that and doing whatever's necessary to make those things happen, and we're not doing it on the arts end, and the kids are smart and they know it and they vocalize it. So, I heard about it in today's rehearsal even. It's not about me and a stipend. Like, it's, it's so much bigger than that. Like, this program can serve so many of the problems that we have here with attendance and literacy and all of that, ESL. Like, we can use theaters to solve a lot of those problems, but it's just not acknowledged anywhere near the other side of the coin, if you know what I mean, okay?
We certainly do, and thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention as well.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next to speak is Sedalia Victorino in Cam from 75 Broad Street. Want to welcome you this evening.
Thank you. So, I was gonna show my support for Mrs. Costa and kind of go on, you know, off of what she said, but I'm gonna change direction then. So, we're still gonna be talking about CUS Theater Arts, but I did want it to, I was gonna say how much I support her program and what she does. Cam was actively involved in theater, and now my daughter is, and what she does is wonderful, and the kids absolutely love her. But since you kind of said you're gonna address that, I would like to say that we will be at the trunk-or-treat festival on Saturday at the Gates of the City, and we'll have a table there, CUS Theater Arts, and we'll be fundraising. We have t-shirts. Cam, Cam has the t-shirt mock-up on now. So, we have t-shirts for sale, keychains, mugs. There's some original student artwork that'll be sold and Halloween-themed items also. So, the public would like to, I think a lot of people are probably gonna attend that event already, but we will be there selling items and fundraising to help support the program. And I've done my own personal fundraiser. It's my birthday next week, so I did a Facebook fundraiser, and we already have a few hundred dollars towards the field trip, because it was very important to me that my daughter and her friends all get to go and experience the Lizzie Borden Bed and Breakfast and get to know more about the story and not just the murder aspect of it.
What date is the fundraiser?
The, the food truck event is on Saturday. It's, it's put on through the city. Monica set it up. So, it's like a trunk-or-treat event at the Gates of the City on Saturday, the 19th, 11 to 4. So, there'll be food trucks there, and I think there's like an axe-throwing truck that's coming, but we're gonna have a table set up with items. We have some t-shirts, and we have keychains, and like I said, we have different price points, and obviously donations are welcome, and tickets will be for, you know, for sale for, for the show too on, in November.
Is there a time on Saturday?
It's 11 to 4.
11 to 4.
Is what they have listed. So, that's, just wanted to kind of put that out there since we had to change direction on my speech. And then I did have a secondary.
Sure.
Statement. I did notice on the agenda for the school committee meetings that the citizens' input part does say that it has to be agenda-related items, but that is not correct. That wording is incorrect, because the city charter.
Right.
Now allows for a public, and obviously you don't want to be up here with particular name-calling or anything crazy, but.
Correct.
As long as it relates to the school department and what goes on in the school.
Educationally related, that's correct.
That. So, I think maybe that's just a copy-and-paste issue. We've kind of just been doing that. It's the same citizens' input description.
It's on the agenda? I mean, excuse me, it's on the website?
It's on the agenda. It hasn't changed, and the city charter went into effect a year, what, a year and a half ago. So, it, maybe it's just a copy-and-paste issue, and it's kind of what has been there for years now, but I just wanted to make that known that that needs to be changed, because that may be deterring other parents from wanting to speak, because they think that whatever information they want to speak about has to be related to the agenda, which is in violation of what the city charter now says as far as public.
You're absolutely correct, and thank you for pointing that out. We'll make sure, I just spoke with the superintendent. He's aware of it now as well. We'll make sure we get that fixed.
Yeah, just in case, because when people go online and they see the agenda and they look at it, they say, "Oh, jeez, I, it's not agenda-related," so they might, you know, might be deterred from wanting to come up and speak, because they think it needs to be an agenda-related item, but they are welcome to come speak on any issues related to the school department.
That is correct.
All right.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is recognition awards from the school committee. We do not have any of those this evening. Next up is the superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Tonight, I'm gonna start with the new Durfee project. Construction update is that each and every single day, if you go by Ellsbury Street, you will see that the steel is going up. Currently, we're about three-fifths done of the entire skeletal foundation of the building, and the steel detailing is now taking place, which includes the fireproofing and the plumbing underground, the rough electrical, the rough plumbing, and the excavation of the utilities. This past week, we did pour parking lot A, which will be the new parking lot on the north side of the building. We are now currently detailing the concrete floor of the fieldhouse area and pouring concrete slab-on-deck and slab-on-grate at least twice per week. The weather slowed us down this past week, but we picked it up over the weekend, and the Suffolk crews did a great job of catching up. So, here are quick fun facts. Just over 5,000 cubic yards of concrete have been poured to date so far. Approximately 1,300 tons of steel has been erected to date. The city of Fall River has been billed approximately 16.285 percent of the total project costs, and on average, we have about 60 construction workers on site each and every day, managed by Suffolk, but also with the oversight of Left Field, our project managers, who I think are doing a great job. So, we're really excited about where we are, and we look forward to some sort of steel-topping-off ceremony later in November. So, look forward to an invitation regarding that event. In terms of school finances, you know, the Senate unanimously passed the Student Opportunity Act last week. Numbers are subject to change, of course, based on what the House does and based on what the governor does, but looking at where we are, we're convinced that there will be significant increase over our foundation budget for the next several years, and that's what this, it's a seven-year phase in of, really, the recommendations is the Foundation Budget Review Commission report. So, this year, our foundation budget was slightly north of 162 million. Chapter 78 was about 131 million, and then the local contribution was slightly above 31 million. If we think about next year, our foundation budget based on the parameters that have been worked out so far, we're looking at an increase of upwards of $15 million perhaps if this bill gets passed. That will be a huge game-changer for this, not only Fall River, but really all the gateway communities, if you really weigh the true cost of, of all of our second-language learner students, poverty and sped students. So, we're excited about that. If you carry that out, the seven years of the projections, we're looking at increases of approximately $75 million roughly across on the Chapter 70 foundation. So, if we're always at 100%, which I hope we get higher, but if we're always at 100, 100% in seven years will be $75 million more than it is now with those increased weightings. So, if we think strategically and long-term, and we're talking about turnaround tonight, we're talking about data presentation investments to close achievement gaps, I look forward to the next several years here with you making the hard decisions about, well, so where do we invest for the greatest impact? And we all know that that greatest impact is as close to the classroom site as possible, and we look forward to those continued conversations, but we also need everyone to know that this, this, this fight isn't over. We're gonna get this bill through the House now. Today, I wrote a piece that we sent into The Globe in response to their editorial today where they weren't happy with the, with the Senate's bill, and they wanted the House to put more accountability into it, and I said, "Well, if you're an urban district, you live with accountability every day, and we don't need any more accountability. What we need is the House and the Senate to really pass this bill," because for us, it's been 20 years of less than what we should have received. So, hopefully, we can continue your help with the local officials. I want to thank our local delegation, particularly Senator Roderick's, for really getting this done. You know, 37 to 0 in the Senate's a big deal. And so, let's, I want to thank our partners, Ms. Cusick from the FREA who's out there, and of course, the FRA, and everyone else that's worked with us on supporting, supporting that bill. Final comments is, it is October, and that means so much more than just Halloween in this great city. It means our October 1 numbers. And looking at our current enrollment, we have about 110 more students at this date than we did last year. Looking at the foundation enrollment, once we work everything out, we're looking at about 55 more students that will be added to the formula. So, when you think about what state aid means and 55 more students, that's a, that's a nice increase to the foundation. I'm excited about the system continuing to grow, and I think as we, the more we talk about early childhood and the more we talk about connectivity and also at the high school level with dual enrollment programs, I think we have a really good shot to continue to grow the foundation, to ensure that Fall River's a city on the move, but also financially with the state aid, when we grow, there's more revenue for us to spend on, on, on educating students. Little fun facts, if you look at where we are, our, our second-language learner numbers are about where they were last year. We're slightly above 17%. Sped, we're about 21.6%. For those students whose first language at home is not English, we're up above 27% now. If you think about increases over the last several years, those are huge jumps for us, which will help us with the weighted formula. And again, we're becoming much more racially diverse as well. We, we ended, we started this year, but where we ended it last year, we're about a 50-50 split between those students who are white, those students who are non-white. We think about the Hispanic population has continually grown in Fall River. That population is, is almost at 24% of the entirety of the students, so about a quarter of the students now. So, we continue to track. I want to thank Brian Michael Azak and, and his team of one, no, he's got a great team of, of five people that have been doing great work. I want to thank Tracy Curly for also really helping us take a look at district data and make some assumptions based on that. So, with that, we've had a great start to the year. We look forward to continuing to muscle through up through, up through Veterans Day and then getting through to Thanksgiving. So, the fall is here. Every day, I can tell you, I've been in schools every day. Some of these school committee members have joined me, and you can attest to the great work that our teachers are doing in classrooms. Our, our leaders in the field are, are helping to support that work, and, and I'm hopeful that we're gonna continue to, to keep morale high and have a great school year. And with that, I complete my comments today.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next agenda item is a student comment, student delegate report. If I can call on Ms. Barrows.
Thank you. At this time, I would actually like to speak on an official statement that was released by the Durfee Student Government a couple of weeks ago that was written by me and a few of the other elected officers. "With the stigma surrounding recent events in Fall River, now more than ever, we must come together as a city. We cannot submit to negativity and degrade the very city that raised us. We must embrace it and bring to light all the beauty within our community that too often goes unrecognized. We cannot change what has happened in the city's past, but we can shift our focus towards changing our future for the better. Our home is associated with drugs, crime, and other negative factors that only reflect, reflect a minuscule portion of our population. The truth is that our city cultivates passion and hope. We have people who are dedicated to doing better for their careers, families, and neighborhoods. Together, we can promote more positive ideals and bring new words to mind when one thinks of Fall River, including unity, camaraderie, and pride. Last year, the I Am Fall River t-shirt movement united Durfee High School students in their love of the city and inspired new, more positive conversation among students and adults alike regarding the Fall River community. The movement was so successful that it reached people in the public that were not directly associated with Durfee. This year, this movement is to be continued with a focus on expanding the sense of pride to all Fall River citizens, no matter their age, race, gender, or school. There is so much to love about Fall River that goes unnoticed, whether it be the beautiful historical sites such as Battleship Cove, the education we offer, giving students an array of opportunities, our cultural diversity, or the sense of community within its people. To bring much more deserved recognition to these aspects of the city and promote a more positive reputation, we urge all citizens to come together and unite in their Fall River pride. And to add to this, I would like to give a small announcement to be sure to keep an eye out for the release of the new Fall River Pride shirts that will be available in different colors so that all schools may come together in embracing their Fall River pride. Thank you."
Thank you. That's certainly a breath of fresh air and comes directly from what we're all here for, directly out of the schools, and so, thank you for that. We appreciate always the input of our students, but certainly it couldn't come at a better time, and so thank you for those words, Ms. Barrows. Mr. Corey?
Could I make a comment?
Certainly.
I just want to, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Barrows, for those comments and that commentary. On behalf of the youth voice in the city, it's so important not to drown out the youth voice with everything else that's going on. I think the voice of the youth speak to the heart of the matter and cannot be denied. So, again, please extend our gratitude to those who put this letter together and the program, and Kyle put I Am Fall River together last year, and I think that's great. Keep it going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the committee this evening? So moved. Made by Mr. Hetzel. Is there a second?
Seconded by Mr. Martins. Any discussion on those minutes?
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Is there a motion to accept travel request?
So moved.
Seconded.
Made by Mr. Hetzel. Seconded by Mr. Coogan. Any discussion on travel? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Next item is donations. Is there a motion to accept donations?
I'll make it.
Made by Mr. Corey. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzel. Any discussion on donations?
Yeah, I just have one question.
Sure, Mr. Corey.
I just, looking over this list of donations, I'm very impressed, and I just want to know if on each donation, do letters of thank you go out to the donors?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. I yield.
You're welcome, Mr. Corey. Thank you. Any further discussion on the donations? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted?
(inaudible).
Yes, Mr. Martins?
Let the superintendent acknowledge the donations.
I'm having him do that right now. Just needed a vote to accept them first. Thank you, Mr. Martins. Mr. Superintendent, would you please, for the record?
Sure. From Amazon Music Technology, two, three middle schools plus two to K-8 schools, 25 Dell Chromebooks, 25 Makey-Makey Classics, and 25 USB microphones worth $8,759.75. From Amazon Music Technology, two, the Fine and Performing Arts at Durfee High School, 25 Dell Chromebooks worth $6,349.75. From Aaron Tetrault to Morton Middle School, $1,250. From Diane Kolzall and Eileen Gilroy to the Henry Lord Community School, $584. From Plymouth Plantation to the Tansey Elementary School, $550. From Donors Choose to the Henry Lord Community School, two HP Chromebooks worth $498.93. From Donors Choose to Tansey Elementary School, $316.25. From Blount Fine Foods, parent to the Parent and Community Engagement Center, $225. And finally, from Donors Choose to Durfee High School, $153.30. We want to thank all of those for their philanthropic support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Next agenda item is contracts. Does any member wish to have any contracts held for discussion?
Motion approved.
Is there a motion to approve has been made by Mr. Coogan? Is there a second?
I just have a question to clarify.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Martins. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I just wanted to try to understand the grant contracts with Amaral Bus Company a little more clearly. I noticed the amounts stated on the sheet. Does that come out of our, our budget, or is, is that part of the grant?
So, those are 21st Century Grant-funded activities. I can let Siobhan answer those questions in specifics if you have now, but those are grant funds from the 21st Century Grant.
So, the amount, the amount of transportation toward Amaral Bus Company would come from the grant monies themselves?
Yes.
That, that answers my question. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Any further discussion on contracts? Ms. Agia?
Just a question on the Delta T number 15. $100,000 in special ed services for staffing. Do you know what that is? Is that new?
Yes. No, it's not new.
Somebody said yes.
It's for the, I'll let him explain it, but it's the.
Solution?
Yep.
Yep. So, we've used Delta T in the past. We're gonna use them currently to engage and really get more certified teachers in the buildings. Right now, it really has been a struggle over the beginning of the year to get all of our positions fulfilled, especially and particularly in special ed.
So, you said we used them in the past, or is it new, like?
We have used them in the past, and we're re-engaging them this year. They have a decent supply of certified teachers, both in usually content areas and special ed. So, we've been using them strategically throughout the district for certain positions that we know we're gonna need filled into services.
And why don't we just hire the people?
Because we haven't been receiving qualified applicants.
So, how much do we pay those folks?
Our, our general teachers?
No, if you work for them, you get paid more than us.
It's, it's an hourly rate that typically with benefits actually equals out to what our folks would make hourly. It's pretty much a, a general wash. In addition, if we do find the applicant suitable for the position, we can hire them on to be our own within 90 days.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll vote to approve it, but I do think it's something that we should get at least some more information on so that we're clearer on what we're doing. It sounds like we're hiring a consultant for him to staff our buildings in certain respects. Maybe we have to, and I don't want to go on and on about it today, but I think that's worthy of a one-pager to the committee, in my opinion. With that, I yield.
Any further discussion on contracts? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Mayor Cora.
Is there a motion to approve grants as listed?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hetzel. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Corey. Any discussion on grants? Ms. Agia?
Yeah, so I, I see here $10,000, $10 million worth of grants. Am I to believe that this is the notice of the budgets for us to approve?
One more time, Ms. Agia, I'm sorry.
No problem.
The last piece of that, I.
I'm asking if this particular item that's before us to approve the grants is us doing our line item fiscal responsibility to determine what's paid for out of grants in the school budget. Is that what this is?
No, my understanding is, and I'll let Mr. Almeida.
So, so we have, so I think in particular, you're talking about the Title I grant, Ms. Agia. We've got about $400,000 that we've put in hold. That's unspent at this time. All the other dollars are set aside for salaries and what we have to pay to the private schools as part of our share of the grant.
So, what we have before us is the line items. It's, it's my belief that as a member of the school committee, we have the authority to approve line item budgets for every single item, including the regular budget and the grant. I've been asking for several months where that information is, so that we can get a true picture of what's paid for in our big budget out of grants. And are you telling me?
And are you telling me that this is the equivalent of that?
These are the grants that have been approved by the state that we have to submit.
We write these grants. These are the, these are the federal grants that come from the state that are, what's the two kinds of grants?
It's the entitlement grants.
Entitlement grants. So we're entitled to these based on certain numbers. The state says, what are you spending your money on? Each year, we submit. That's what this is. So we've received these funds now, and as Kevin said, we have about $400,000 unexpended that the school committee is going to be able to make decisions on what they want to do with it.
Let me just rewind then. When do we know the amount here?
I'm sorry?
When do we know the amount?
We find out in July what our total amount is.
Yep. And that's after or before we do our school budget?
After.
After. So, when we were doing our school budget, I recall, taking positions and moving them from the operating, from the grants to the operating budget, because the, what we were told was that we were going to get a cut. We were looking at a cut in Title I money. Am I off on that?
No.
So, that took us to May, June, thereabouts. So, ever since we've had that discussion and we passed our budget, at that point, it's my belief that we would have said, we're anticipating a certain amount of money is going to come from Title I at a cut. So we would end up funding a whole bunch of positions. And every time that I've been on this committee in the past, we would get a line item that says, this position at X school is a Title I-funded position. We would be able to articulate that in our big budget. I don't believe we ever get that.
So it is, it is in our budget?
We do.
The positions are in our budget. Each school has their specific positions within the budget that shows which ones are grant-funded and which ones are not.
And...
You get that.
And when the funding came in, how much was it?
I'm sorry?
We were anticipating a cut in Title I earlier, and when we did our budget.
The grants, we never know what the grants are. And so, because we're building a budget and it's January, we do the best we can to figure out where we are at any point in time. And so, over the last four years, we've seen cuts in Title I. And so, with that, with that in mind, we were conservative, and we figured the grants would continue to go down.
So when we say there was going to be a cut, that means, I'm assuming that that means less in the current budget than in the prior one?
Correct.
So you're saying everything was, was given to us ahead of time in the budget articulated as what was paid for on grants? In November, in May, when we passed the budget, you told, you just said that everything was in there about the grants, what was paid for out of Title I.
It is.
At the same time as we were told it was going to be less money than the current year.
Yep.
That's what we were told. What I'm having a hard time understanding...
We didn't know, we didn't know at that time.
But you were anticipating it to be less.
Correct.
Meaning less than zero. Less this year than prior year.
Less than the prior year, yes.
So then we got a report last month that, or two months ago, that I asked some questions on, that says from 2019 till now, it looked like the change was 809,000 additional money. So, at that time, I asked, well, what are we, if we already knew that we were going to have a cut, so then we should have at least 800,000 or more because we took some other positions. And now, today, we're saying we've got 400,000 left. You know my question, next question?
I understand what your questions are. So, so, so when it comes to those questions, we've had to move, we've lost money in Title IV. So I've had to shift positions from Title IV in, in between the budget and now, rather than move positions over to the budget, I've kept positions on grants. And so, we've lost funding in Title II. We've lost funding in Title IV, and I've had to shift positions around to make it work. So, the 800,000 they are expecting becomes 400,000 because of that, and that's the reason why.
Yeah, it's, sounds like a valid reason. Not denying it, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time. But I don't recall seeing that anywhere. So as a member of the school committee, in my opinion, if we just said, oh, let's just approve this, it could go through, we would never know what you just told us. Would I?
Well, I think we've sent home on Friday emails explaining to folks what the grants were and where the cuts were, and the strategic priority of pulling those positions off the grant so that we have the ability, when the grants come through in October after the date is presented, to make decisions about where to apply money. If I had my druthers in seven years, we wouldn't have one grant-funded position, and all the grant money would be used for one-time expenses on important stuff to close gaps. I want to get all the positions off the grants because we cannot rely on them, because Kevin's right. Each year, they tell us the federal government's cutting all of these grants, and we've lost money. Kevin's had to move things around. It's in your budget binders. If you go back and look at historically, the last several fiscal years, you'll be able to see, if you're looking for a piece of paper that says FY '17, FY '18, FY '19, FY '20, I can produce that, but it's also in your binder.
Right. So I guess to cut to the chase, the bottom line is, is the school committee has a responsibility and a, and a, it's a duty that we get elected to manage, to help to manage the budget. It's one of the biggest things we do. And what I've just heard here today was a valid discussion about what, where we went. The problem is, is that you never came to the school committee to say, we have to move X amount of dollars to this grant, to that grant. That's what I'm trying to get at. That's why I've been asking for the last three months to say, when are we going to get a Title I budget, and when are we going to actually get the notice? What you described, Mr. Almeida, seemed like a very reasonable thing to do. My problem is, is that the school committee has been just chopped right out of the process, and we don't have a determination to say, okay, we need to spend X amount of Title I money because Title II got cut or Title IV got cut. When did that vote come before this committee? It didn't. And that's what I'm aggravated about is because I think we should have more of a say in where the money is coming from. And when I've asked those questions for the last two months, nobody's thought to say, well, maybe we should look at it and give a one-page document or something to say, this is the rationale why. We've got to try and figure it out, and it's real frustrating to me as a member of the committee to just say, yeah, we're going to spend 10 million. Yep, all approved, move on to the next, without real questions on some of this stuff.
So if I could, if I could just comment. So the, from, from, from my standpoint, where I sit, it's very difficult to prepare a budget when you don't know what your grants are going to be. And so, we've been very, we've been conservative, and we've tried to move positions off grants so that we don't have to worry about there potentially being cuts in grants. And so, we've moved positions over. We're very fortunate this year that we've gotten additional money, and I appreciate everything that's happened there to get the additional money. But there are, a budget is a living document, and things change over the course of the summer. If, if, if things were perfect and I knew the budget was going to be what it was going to be in January to what it's going to be now, it'd be wonderful, but it's not that way. Things change over the course of time. It changes over the summer. I find out that, I've, I've had years where I found out in July that I've lost a kindergarten grant for $400,000, and then I've had to figure out what I've had to do afterwards. And so, I, I, I completely get it, and the other thing that I wanted, wanted to say was, we're not given a lot of time. And so, we don't know what that Title I grant allocation is going to be until the end of July. And that, and then, once we've get that allocation, we've got 45 days to submit it to them. That's literally the turnaround time we have, just to make sure that we get it in on time so that we're able to charge everything that we charged in the previous year there and what we have according to the budget. And we find out after the fact that these little moves and things have to be made, and we make them within the grant so that it does not affect the operating budget.
Yeah, and all I'm asking is, as a member of the school committee, as a full body, I think it's incumbent upon the administration from the superintendent, or you through the superintendent, to get us that information when you got to change. Like, for instance, the issue that you talked about years ago when you had to cut 400,000. You didn't just cut it and stop making the changes. You came to the committee to say, I got a $400,000 problem. We've got to do X, Y, and Z to get through it. All I'm asking for is the same type of thing when we do the grants, you know, for what we're going to spend money on. So we get it after the fact, and you have to respect the position of a school committee person to say, we're advocating and trying to pull this position, that position. I don't know. And I do my homework, and I try to study, but I truly don't know what the heck we did here with some of the stuff. I don't think you did anything wrong. But we certainly didn't get presented with the information before it gets spent. We get, we spend money, and then we tell us, well, we made a decision because of X, Y, and Z. To me, that's a problem, and we need to, as a school committee, look at our own policies to say, if we're allowing that kind of stuff to go on, we shouldn't, because it's just basically, you can spend the money wherever you want, and we didn't really have a say, but now you come before us for this. I can't put it all in perspective because I don't think we're getting all of the information. That's all. I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I just think it's one of our biggest jobs is the budget and where the money's coming, and I feel like I was out of the loop. If other people don't feel they were, then they can speak for themselves. But I'm telling you right now, from my perspective, I was out of the loop on where this money was coming from. And my last comment is just another request that I made several months ago, was to give us an actual dollar figure for where we're at with some of the money that was after July, once the dust settled, to try and get a figure. And maybe that's coming through the finance report this month, but I'd still like to know where we're at financially, and I don't think we have that yet. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Agia. Any further discussion on grants? Mr. Martins?
On the Spec Grant 94, 142. And going down on that page for the support staff, I noticed that the secretary bookkeeper is budgeted here for $278,864. And that is for six paraprofessionals. Is that correct?
The, the 278 that you're looking at is the bookkeepers? That's for seven bookkeepers?
Seven.
Seven special ed clerks, yep.
Now, the line below that, the secretary bookkeeper, I'm sorry. Yeah, the, I'm sorry, the one above it, aides and paraprofessionals, $145,954. And that is for six.
Yes, sir.
It seems to be a lopsided amount of money there. You know, that in essence, you're looking at, oh my goodness, the $100 and some thousand difference between the two? For one additional, one person?
Yep.
The individual salaries must be for clerical and support people. Must be quite high.
The clerks there make anywhere, the clerks make anywhere from 33 to 4. In this case, there's one that makes over 40 grand. And then there, in the, in the paras, they all make anywhere from 18 to 23,000 is what they make, so.
One of my things, of course, and you've heard before, is the fact that the paras educationally provide the, the whole cliche of get the bigger, the bigger bang for the buck in there. And there seems to be a big gap between the salaries for seven clerical people and the six paraprofessionals in there. I do realize that you need to have clerical people, but do you need to have seven clerical people to administer that particular grant at a rate of 278,000, almost 279,000?
So just to clarify a little bit on, on...
Could you speak directly to the mic?
Yep. So just to clarify a little bit on the salaries for some of our clerks, some of them have been with the district as long as 30 years. Also, as I know the Walker Report was recently distributed out to school committee for your review, in the report, it notes that our office is actually understaffed in terms of clerical work, that these folks are working and supporting anywhere from as many as four to five schools at one time, which could be over, you know, potentially over 1,000 kids in a caseload. So I think in the purpose of this grant, it hasn't limited us to the amount of paras we have and the support we have. This is just the way we distributed the funds for this portion of the grant to pay for, you know, these salaries within the office.
Could you have the mic so it's bent towards you? Repeat that last sentence?
Yep. So, the grant itself is what we have decided to use to, to pay for those salaries. It hasn't limited us in any way for a capacity of paras throughout the district.
Okay. But nevertheless, you have seven clerical people paid on this grant.
Correct.
And you have six paraprofessionals paid on this grant. And there is a good chunk of change between the two amounts in there. And the issue is, okay, do you really need to have, in my opinion, of course, do you really need to have that many clerical support?
You need more.
To assist in, in implementing this grant versus having, just flip that around, where you have more paraprofessionals to assist in the classrooms to improve student learning. Now, obviously, that's what you put out here, and I just want to avoid, I guess I don't have any choice but to say yes on this grant because it's already probably been approved by the Department of Education. Is that not so?
It was.
Yeah. Even before it gets to the school committee, it's already approved by the D O, by the DESE, which I always find amazing, but nevertheless, I guess that's the way the cookie crumbles. And, but I don't have to like it, and I don't, and I will for the remaining months that I'm on the school committee, that I will constantly argue about having more paraprofessionals. Now, maybe you have to rob Peter to pay Paul and get it from one place to another place. There's only so much money, even though, as the superintendent indicated, you know, with quite a bit of, of additional funds, but there's still limits in there. And later on this evening, we'll talk about the 2019 MCAT results in there. And in my opinion, again, there is a great need to have additional paras in the classroom in addition to the teachers and the paras that are required by law, by IEP in there, to have classroom paras for those kids that are, well, I guess I'm getting away from the, this grant. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Thank you, Mr. Loesch, for, for that clarification. I think it's important to note that both of those job titles have collective bargaining agreements in place that define salary ranges. You're sort of confined to those based on the number of years individuals have worked in the district, and that's why their salaries are defined as such. That's why there's a gap. If I heard you correctly, the Walker Report indicates you could actually use more clerks in order to keep tabs on meeting dates, when to schedule meetings, how many students' needs are being met. That all coordination, all that coordination has to happen by those, by those clerical or those clerks, if you will. And so, I know you're preparing a presentation for the full committee at a later date. I believe it's the end of October, beginning of November. And so, we look forward to hearing your presentation about additional resources, and I'm sure it'll probably include some additional paraprofessional supports. If not, then I'm sure you'll be able to explain why you feel, as the person who's responsible for special education, that it's not needed at this time. But I'm going to go out on a limb and say, you're probably going to be bringing some recommendations for additional staff, which I'm sure we'll take up at, at a future meeting.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on grants?
Sure. Which is stated, the difference is $132,910.
Right. And what I'm trying to say, Mr. Martins, is they're not in control of that. It's set, their pay schedules are set by the individual and by their collective bargaining agreement. So, Mr. Loesch and Mr. Almeida can't make that number any lower. He's got to pay those seven people, and whatever step they're on is that, when you add it up, that's the total salaries for, for those individuals. They don't have any discretion with that. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Carrick.
Next agenda item is the discussion portion. The first is the presentation and discussion of the Fall River Public Schools Accountability, Excuse me, data as presented by Dr. Tracy Curley, Director of Assessment, Accountability, Data and Research. I'd ask that the committee take a seat in the front row. My understanding, I've been advised that this is a PowerPoint presentation. And then, once the presentation's made, we'll open it up for discussion from members of the committee. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a little, uh.
Oh, I'm just checking to see if that else is coming. So, thank you for this opportunity to speak to the committee tonight. I'm here to talk to you about the district's accountability measures for school year 2019. And I'm going to take an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the big picture, data summary, system components, and things like that, before handing it over to our assistant superintendents, who will actually take you through the district response and next steps in relation to this data. So, this is, this is some burbage that I took from DESI around their approach to this accountability system and what it means in Massachusetts. So their objective really is to provide us with some clear and actionable information about the district and school performance. And their aim really is to help improve the performance of all students. Here in Fall River, we really take that same approach. We are, as a district, taking a look at district-level data, school-level data, and trying to figure out where things are going well, where we could make improvements, and how we can reallocate some resources, whether they be materials, personnel, and things like that. And that's really what our assistant superintendents will talk about a little bit later. So some things to keep in mind in terms of this accountability system. Most people think about the accountability in terms of our MCAS data. How students perform on MCAS, how they grow from year to year on MCAS. But this accountability system really does include more than that kind of information. You'll notice here, so we have the student achievement and the student growth, and I think that's kind of where people's minds go. But we also take a look at progress toward English language proficiency. This is measured by access testing. It's the test that's given to our English learners about halfway through each school year, and it measures their progress toward English language proficiency. That's an additional measure in addition to the MCAS. The next piece is high school completion. There are three indicators there, things we talk about all of the time in terms of four-year graduation rate, the five-year extended engagement rate, as well as our dropout rate. And then finally, there are additional indicators, which again, they are, they're measures beyond, they're measures beyond MCAS, and they're measures for students that are beyond those MCAS testing grades. One of them is the chronic absenteeism, and that's absenteeism for grades 1 through 12. So not just that, grades 3 through 8 MCAS and high school MCAS. And then again, 11th and 12th grade advanced coursework completion. So this isn't about a measure that stops at grade 10 for our students. We are held accountable for student success beyond that 10th grade test. Within the system, there are normative and criterion reference components. That normative piece is all-around accountability percentiles. That's when our schools get measured against other schools in the state. There is not a normative measure for districts. Nowhere in the system will you see districts ranked against other districts. We rely solely on that second bullet there, the progress toward targets. So our accountability as a district is measured solely by how we're improving by our district, toward our district targets. And then finally, it's a little bit cut off, but you guys have your packets. As we're talking through this, when we talk about 2019 accountability and kind of where we land, it's important to note that at the district level, and then for each one of our schools, that the 2019 accountability is actually a weighted measure. So this isn't just about what happened in 2019. The 2018 results are weighted in there, 40% for 2018, 60% for 2019. And we expect, although we don't have the numbers on it yet, we expect that over the course of four years, our accountability will end up being a weighted four-year average in terms of all of those measures. And then finally, there's some new language to describe the extent to which schools in the district are meeting targets, and we'll talk a bit about that when we get there. So, as a district, we talk about our accountability, you know, kind of big picture. Zoom into the schools, zoom in with respect to particular indicators. But the one thing that I just want to make sure that, you know, we talk about in terms of the big picture, is that as a district, we are making progress. That's been the biggest message that we've gotten from the state, you know, in writing through the reports and through our correspondence with them, that we are making progress under this new system. And then another piece of this is that 93% of our schools, so 15 out of our 16 schools, regardless of how they're classified in terms of needing assistance or not needing assistance from the state, 93% of our schools are improving or better under the new system. And that plays into the fact that, as a district, we're making progress, but it also speaks to the work that's going on at each of our individual schools. So overall, we have 16 schools in the district. Seven are classified as not requiring assistance. Eight are classified as requiring assistance or intervention. And then we have one school that's classified with insufficient data just because you don't have enough students in the school to be measured. What we see across the district is that our schools' percentiles range from 2 to 55. So that's a number that can lie anywhere between 1 and 99. When schools are ranked against like schools in the state, our schools range from 2 to 55, pretty wide range. And then target percentages, when we look at that criterion reference component and the extent to which they are meeting their targets, they're meeting anywhere between 20 and 87% of those targets. So again, we have a pretty wide range in the district. And then finally, overall classification as a district is that we're not requiring any assistance or intervention. So I referenced the normative and the criterion reference components. For the most part, when we take a look at our data today, we're actually going to be looking at everything with respect to those color codes. As a district, we're given targets in many categories. We talked about all of those different measures. And in each category, you'll be able to take a look at the colors as we go. Will either have declined, showed no change from last year, showed improvement without actually meeting the target. We could meet the target, or we could exceed the targets. And so as we go through each one of the five indicators, we'll take a look at how we did. So last year, when we looked at our data, it was actually all on one slide, and I color-coded each one of the boxes for a visual, and I thought it was a little confusing. So this year, we're going to take a look at these individually. And we're going to start here with the achievement data. So you'll notice that on the left side of this chart, we're looking specifically at our nine non-high school grades. So we've got grades 3 through 8 performance on the left, and high school grades performance over there on the right. And what you can see in terms of ELA, math, and science achievement is that, you know, we're, in ELA, for the all-students category, there was no change. We looked the same as we did last year. Mathematics, we saw a little bit of a bump, but not enough to meet the target. And we actually showed a decline in our science achievement with kind of this net impact as no change from year to year in terms of the all-students category. Just to the right of that, the state takes a look at all of those indicators again, ELA, math, and science, but this time just for our lowest-performing students. So they look at the students and how they performed last year and say, to what extent did students improve against their targets in this year? And you can see here that the high point for us was in mathematics achievement. When we look at our lowest-performing 25% of kids, they actually exceeded the targets that were set for them by the state. We made improvements in ELA, but didn't exactly meet the target, and then had this overall, this net change in terms of the lowest-performing students that met an overall target. It looks different in the high school grades. Where across the board, for our all-students category, there was no change. So when we look at the average scaled scores in ELA, in math, in science, they pretty much stayed the same from year to year. For our lowest-performing students, we actually saw a decline at the, at the level, you know, in terms of the achievement. So scaled scores went down from year to year. The difference at the high school is that we're not looking at a group of students, how they did last year, how they did this year. The targets that the high school has to meet are actually for a completely different group of students. Basically, what happens is they take a look at how the 25% of the lowest-performing students did last year at Durfee and say, okay, this year, you got this new group of kids, regardless of who they are or where they've been, they have to do better than your lowest-performing students did last year. So the measure at the high school is a little bit different, but it's not something that the state is really looking at changing because they don't test students two years in a row the way we do at other schools. The next indicator here is the growth indicator. And that really is something that's been part of this system, you know, forever, right? Student growth percentile. The difference now is that it's this average SGP for all students instead of the median SGP, which was the old measure. And basically, what this is telling us is that for individual, for individual students, on average, in grades 3 through 8, our kids are growing, but they're kind of on the low end of growth. When they're compared to students who have performed like them in the past, they're doing slightly better than kids who performed like them in the past. At the high school grades, you know, we are, there is a little bit more of a struggle there. Again, there's growth, but it's considered low growth, lower than typical for our all-students category. And then for our lowest-performing students, we're categorized as having very low growth. High school completion indicator, that includes the four-year cohort graduation, extended engagement, and the annual dropout rate. We have this net effect there. You can see that three at the bottom. We have this net effect as kind of a no change. But that's really attributed to the fact that the four-year cohort graduation rate had no change. We showed a decline in the extended engagement rate, and we improved the annual dropout rate, but not enough to meet our target. This is, again, this is another one of the indicators that's not related to MCAS. We talked about progress toward English language proficiency. These are our English learners taking access. Every year, students have a target that they have to meet toward meeting English language proficiency over a six-year period. We see that at the lower grades, we're meeting our targets in terms of that six-year goal. And at the high school, not meeting targets. We showed a decline in performance from 2018 to 2019. And finally, here, we have our additional indicators. These are, again, not the traditional grades 3 through 8 and then grade 10 at the high school. We look at chronic absenteeism across grades 1 through 12. And you can see here that chronic absenteeism was a really bright spot for us in terms of our non-high school grades and high school grades when we look at our all-students. In both cases, we exceeded our targets. When we look at the lowest-performing students, though, we can see that we didn't meet targets. We had no change in grades 3 through 8. And at the high school, the chronic absenteeism rate for our students in, at the high school, actually, the chronic absenteeism rate increased, so we showed a decline in performance. At the high school, though, we did have a lot of growth in terms of the advanced coursework. Last year, we earned zero points for advanced coursework up at the high school. That's a measure of the percentage of high school students in grades 11 and 12 who take an advanced course, and there's kind of a list of them. And this year, we exceeded our target, which was pretty impressive. So as we take a look at kind of where we were over the course of all of these measures, some high points for us were the achievement for our lowest-performing 25%. That was a place where we were, we were meeting targets, and in particular, we exceeded the target for math. Our progress toward English language proficiency was another place. We're in grades 3 through 8. We met our target. Chronic absenteeism for all students in grades 1 through 12 was a place where we exceeded our target. And then advanced coursework in grades 11 and 12, we exceeded our targets. There were at least as many areas where we showed no change or declined, and those would certainly be an area of focus for us moving forward. Our achievement level for all students, both at non-high school and high school grades, was a place where we showed no change or declined. And we did see a decline in science in the non-high school grades. Our overall achievement for the lowest-performing 25% was a place where we showed no change or decline at the high school, and we did see a decline in ELA and math. Progress toward English language proficiency at the high school was an area of concern, as well as high school completion, where we saw a decline in the extended engagement rate. And then finally, although we saw chronic absenteeism as a bright spot for us in our all-students category, when we look at our lowest-performing 25% across grades 1 through 12, we see no change or a decline in the high school rates. So this is a visual that I shared last year, and it certainly, it's been updated here for 2019. And it shows where each one of our schools landed in terms of meeting their targets, as well as their overall accountability percentile. And so it's here for the individual schools where you can see that range of anywhere between the second and 55th percentile for our schools, and you can see the range of the targets that they met, anywhere between 20 and 87% of targets. One thing to highlight, kind of over there on the right, where we see the schools that are identified for focused targeted support, and then that broad comprehensive support, is that in addition to having some of our schools in the lowest 10th percentile, we did see low subgroup performance in six of our schools as well. And that speaks to the fact that there was an identified subgroup when, in comparison to the rest of the state, was actually in the lowest 5th percentile. And in all of those cases, for low subgroup performance, they were all schools who were already identified for being in the lowest 10% overall. So the next piece of this is for each of our assistant superintendents to come on up and talk about the summary of next steps coming out of their departments with relation to these four actions.
So I'm sure the question in your minds is, okay, so what's next? In order to talk about what we are focusing on moving forward, it's really important to also highlight those practices and those areas which we've already started to engage in. The first, under professional development. If you've attended the instructional subcommittees, we've talked a lot about the fact that we have high turnover in Fall River. So though we might have trained people really well and engaged in a lot of professional development in the past, a lot of those people have left. So this is an ongoing practice that's very needed within the district. This year, and since I've been here for the last two years, we've engaged heavily in professional development over the summers. And starting last year, we took the two district PD days and had district-wide professional development. We are continuing that practice this year. And with your support, we're increasing our professional development series in which we are working with Fred TV to videotape so that all persons throughout the district can engage in professional development, even if their, their lives don't permit them to actually attend in person. We are going to be offering a four-part workshop series on the workshop model. And like I said, we are going to be stipending teachers to come to that. There will be a product that needs to be uploaded following this workshop. And then we're going to be posting these so that every teacher in the district will also be able to watch these, complete a product, and then upload that. And then they'll also receive their professional development credits. One awesome point Mr. Coogan has brought in that's part of our teach point is it tracks our professional development for now on. We're able to upload every PD. From now on, we're able to upload every PD into one system that tracks. Schools will be receiving training, and they will be aligning their professional development to not only their school improvement plans, but also to the district. Those PDs will be going through my office for approval so that we have a checks and balance system to ensure that all professional development is needed and necessary at the school level as well as the district. So under curriculum and resources, when I first got here, as you know, schools were kind of all over the place in what we were doing and what we were offering. So we decided to get very focused on our curriculum maps. We really wanted to establish coherence across the district, and we're getting closer and closer. I can't say that it's ever going to be done because these are things that need to be looked at on an ongoing basis. Things are outdated, new resources come into play. We have heavily participated with Engage New York, which is an OEM resource, which is an open resource, meaning it's free, but it is not the end-all of everything that we do. We have really dove in specifically with our middle school maps. That's where we saw a lot of drop-off when it came to achievement. We had teams come together. We have fully aligned our novel sets. Every school's received their materials and resources. We also have gone to ANET district-wide, and I'm about ready to show you a slide on why that is so important. They have brought with them an ongoing use of resources. They have a resource deck that all of our principals had training over the summer, and we have ongoing training throughout the year. For our early education, we rolled out foundations to all K-classes, so that's not just your regular education, but that's also to our special education and our foundation classes. We've also started a new trend called the Wind Blocks, What I Need. Some of our schools have really stepped up and stepped out to rethink their master schedules in order to provide interventions to kids as they need it. And then we are still part of the MAPLE initiative, which is the Massachusetts Association of Personalized Learning with TANZI and Durfee, so really trying to think outside the box in how kids are being able to access their education. For implementation of practices, we've talked a lot about, that just went down, how we are monitoring whether or not these practices are being implemented effectively. So we've instituted a three-pronged system of school-based walks, content walks, as well as district walks. As part of those walks, we are also engaging in progress monitoring meetings for our turnaround schools that's on a monthly basis. For our trimester schools, we do it three times a year, and on our quarter schools, we do it four times a year. A big, big plus here, last year, and we clearly saw the success, we stipended curriculum leads for ELA, math, and science. And in math specifically, we saw a huge jump, especially at our elementary levels, and we saw consistent jumps in our ELA. This year, with your support, we were able to have full-time directors of curriculum that came on. So Shell Rabbit is doing secondary ELA and math, Stephanie Kennedy is doing elementary ELA and math, and Dr. Kim LaLiberty is doing our science K through 12. And this is very crucial because they're going to be pushing out some of these big key ideas that we've been doing with our ANET partners. Tracy helped me out with this. I had a hypothesis that our ANET schools would show across the district greater academic achievement and growth towards their targets. My hypothesis was definitely on par because they had dedicated coaching, they had ongoing support and services, and they had aligned curriculum across each of our ANET schools. And as you can see here, I'm showing the district against our three ANET-partnered schools. So Fonseca, Henry Lord, and Talbot have all had the ANET partnership for the last two years, and they showed significant growth. When we look at the district as a whole, we added on Durfee, Watson, and Morton at the end of last year. And one of the things that was very interesting in this area is that you can see by the color coatings how the schools are doing according to the district. But when we talk about reaching the percentage of targets, if you look up at the district, the district as a whole met or exceeded 25% of their targets in the district. Our ANET-partnered schools, of Fonseca, Henry Lord, and Talbot, met or exceeded 75% of their targets. And then our three schools that we brought on at the end of last year met 17% of their targets. So the hypothesis that our ANET schools would far exceed our expectations was spot-on. It doesn't mean that that's always going to be the case. We need to make sure that we're very deliberate in how we are integrating them. But as you know, we did add ANET full partnerships at Durfee, Watson, and Morton, and have proposed to also roll it out at Green. And we are utilizing the assessment system district-wide, and as part of that comes the entire complete toolbox that we were talking about earlier. So not only have we been extremely proactive, but we are also very responsive. In Dr. Malone's Friday memo, you will have access to all schools' turnaround plans and school improvement plans. So there'll be a whole folder for you guys to preview, and so you'll actually get to see how schools have been aligning their plans to not only their specific goals and objectives, but the district as a whole. We have completed all of our first-round progress monitoring meetings, and the schools are really working hard. And we are moving, and we are really hoping that we move even quicker as we really make sure that we're focusing on the right things.
Good evening. So in looking at the professional development through our office, in my limited time here, I've been able to identify some major areas of priority that we're going to target, especially over this year. But in addition, we're going to have a significant amount of the strategic plan that's going to be dedicated to actually creating a professional development plan for special education for the district. That's going to really build upon each other to develop capacity within our schools and build on our educators' skill sets, also leveraging the talent that we already really have within the district. One thing I've noticed throughout visiting schools, meeting with all of our teachers and stakeholders, that we do have a tremendous amount of talented teachers and professionals within this district, and we need to leverage that in order to build and really make our instruction what it needs to be. So giving a short summary here, right now, we have started a pilot with the Landmark Outreach Group, which is, if you're aware, is associated with the Landmark School, specializes in language-based disabilities, also in inclusion support services. We've piloted this over at the Sylvia School. We noted that this was, in particularly, a sub-separate group, and some inclusion teachers who really needed some assistance through our discussions last year. We're going to really see kind of what this looks like and see how our data comes back from these groups and monitoring through ANET and, of course, MCAS scores, and look to see if this is going to be replicable throughout the district. We also have contract with them to come in for our November 5th PD and our January 31st to focus on differentiation, accommodations, and modifications throughout the district, which was noted as a need by teachers, and then also looking at inclusion and best practices for our spring sessions. The other pieces that we're looking at really creating and using our own internal development is meeting facilitation, IP development, and writing has been identified as a major area of concern for our teachers, that they need more support in this. Classroom systems for behavior modification, data collection and presentation, and once again, differentiation, modification, and accommodations in the classroom. We've also started a contract with Exceptional Child to support our power professionals and new teachers, which gives us a PD library of over 120 different professional developments that they can access at any time. We can also set a kind of a course of study for our power professionals, depending on what disability area they may be in, in order to best meet their needs and really make sure that their skill sets are up to par in what they need to be in order to really meet the diverse needs of our students. Lastly, we've also, we're going to be contracting with South Coast Collaborative for professional development for power professionals on the November 5th and January 31st PD days, and really committing to making sure that we're supporting all areas of our student support. Looking at curriculum and resources, this past year, we note, we identified the fact that we had two online curriculums that weren't actually throughout the entire district. We had only used them in selective classrooms throughout. So those were two pieces that we expanded district-wide to help really better our MCAS alt scores in support of our teachers in our community-based and autism classrooms to making sure that they had a consistent curriculum to utilize in order to really measure student progress and assess their needs. We're also going to be looking into exploring Wilson and Orton-Gillingham training, and that's really within collaboration with the Office of Instruction. One piece we've noted is that, you know, significantly, looking at the high school and our scores there, and especially in our lowest needs population, is reading is still a significant need among students, that we still have a lot of students progressing throughout our schools who are not at, not at grade level and where they need to be. And when we have, when we pass the fourth grade, you know, we're no longer learning to read, we're reading to learn. And we still have a lot of students who are stuck before that point. In addition, we're going to look to create a curriculum review process with the Office of Instruction to make sure that we're really previewing all possible curriculums that are going to meet a diverse range of needs throughout our district. I think curriculum review for us is extremely important due to that we really have such a diverse population of multilanguage learners, special education students, and just the diverse profiles that come into our schools every day. Implementation and practices, Special Education Office this year is going to be joining the Office of Instruction for all of our school walkthroughs so we can provide timely feedback in terms of special education services and instruction, a point that hasn't really been done in previous. The other piece that we're going to be doing is looking to create our own team to really be doing our walkthroughs through all substantially separate classrooms to ensure that specialized education is actually happening within these rooms, and identifying rooms for targeted support so that we can make sure we're developing our teachers' needs and therefore meeting
Good evening. I'm going to talk a little bit about social-emotional learning and the work that has really just taken off and gotten started in our district. Some of the highlight or the key initiatives are, we have our Laterno, Doran, and Green School, working with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on Systems for Student Support called the S3 Academy, where now we're in its second year. We're, several times a year, we go for some training, and we come back and we put some of those systems into play. We also have many of our schools already trained in PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Support. And this year, we have two more of our schools that have joined the MTSS. MTS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. We've heard in the academic realm talking about RTI, Response to Intervention, where all youngsters receive tier-one support, and sometimes our students need tier-two or tier-three interventions. It's the same on the behavioral or social-emotional support side as well. This year, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education added another tiered system of support, a fifth academy, if you will, involving social-emotional learning and mental health. We have Fonseca, Henry Lord, and Sylvia School working on that. Some of the things that we've been working at is looking at organizational structures. What do we offer for all students in tier-one, and what supports do we have in tier-two and tier-three? We also have an opportunity that we're working this year with the Rennie Center. They use a lot of the work from Castle, which talks about the five targeted areas that we should be supporting our youngsters, and that is district-wide. We have a district team that's participating in that. We've worked on a mission statement, and now we're working on norms. So we're looking forward to progress in putting together an SEL manual that really documents the legacy of the work. We've also been invited to partner with UConn. It would be a five-year partnership, looking at integrating not only the positive behavioral intervention supports, but our literacy, of which we have several schools that are participating in the tiered system academies for literacy. And really, what we're trying to focus now on is SEL isn't something that happens over here, and the academics happen over here. We're really trying to integrate the two. We also, this year, trained over 120 of the Fall River teachers in responsive classroom. That was both at the elementary as well as the middle school level, and that was through our partnership with Bay Coast Bank and the Education Chamber of Commerce. This is just a chart right from the DESI website, where we actually are looking at now our attendance. Our attendance improved ever so slightly, as Tracy mentioned. This past year, our attendance rate was 92.4. Last year, it was 92.1. But what are we doing to address that? We're continuing the Mayor Superintendent's Task Force. That is a citywide committee. We continue to meet monthly. We are meeting again this Thursday over at Trade Winds at 8:30, if anybody would like to join us. Mr. Corey is officially on that committee. Last year, one of the focuses were, in addition to continuing the Red Share Initiative, was we were able to provide transportation for our students who perhaps went to an 8:30, 9 o'clock open office hours at a pediatrician's office, and then perhaps families were limited on how to get their youngster to school. We had a courier that was able to work with some of our local pediatrician's offices to get those youngsters to school so that they didn't miss a full day. Attendance, again, is monitored in all of our schools. I was just last week over at the Doran School, and right outside the main office is the daily attendance that's charted and monitored, as well as we know that's tweeted out in our district every single day. The majority of our schools have reduced the number of chronically absent students, and our seventh attendance officer just started today. So this budget, we have two additional attendance officers. So now, in looking at our resources, this year, as you know, we implemented the Choose Love curriculum, of which there are four pillars. There's courage, gratitude, forgiveness, and compassion. Currently, we're focusing on the theme of courage so that the universal language is in all of our schools, in all of our classrooms. We continue with the Youth Empowerment Task Force, which Superintendent Malone started last January, which focuses on peace and positivity. That task force will be meeting this Thursday at 10 o'clock, again, over at Trade Winds. And we're looking at highlighting now another event citywide where we can encourage peace and positivity. We also celebrated the Sandy Hook Promise Say Hello Week, and we celebrated International Anti-Bullying Week just last week on October 7th by wearing blue. On October 23rd, we'll be celebrating Unity Day across the city and by highlighting wearing orange that day. Our first-quarter theme, as I shared with you, is courage, and we will have a community event from 10 to 12 over at the CUS School, where we will continue to recognize at least 16 of our students, one from each of our schools, for some courageous behavior that they've demonstrated. And celebrations such as these will be highlighted all year long. Some of our implementations in practice, the Handle With Care Initiative stemmed from a training last year that we went through as part of a CAC initiative, and it was the DEC, the Drangadaja Children Alliance. So we have actually implemented now where a QR code was created, and first responders, so police, fire, DCF, anytime a first responder goes into the home and has concern that perhaps a child, not necessarily who attends our school system, because we're trying to roll out this through all of the schools in the city, so that all of the children will get some kind of care that they may need. The first responder will take their cellphone and with their camera, hover over the QR code, a form comes up, and basically it just gives us some identifiable information on who the child may be, as well as perhaps a date of birth. With that, the information gets funneled to one person in our system, and then that person communicates to each of the schools that perhaps a student in our district needs a little bit more TLC that particular day. In addition to rolling out Choose Love to all of our preschool through grade 12, we also have trained our play and learn groups. So those are our zero-to-five students who may not be attending any formal schooling, but will come to a play and learn throughout our area, greater Fall River area, and they have received the training. Believe it or not, our community partners have asked for Choose Love training. So that is in process, as well as we have a whole training component for parents. And then, of course, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed has now come out with a tool called a Pro- tool called a program evaluation, and we volunteered to partner with them. We're going to use their tool, in addition to some of our own stuff, but we're going to use their tool to evaluate our Choose Love program. And then finally, how are we going to assess some of this stuff and know that it's working? We'll continue to administer the Conditions for Learning Survey. That's to parents, that's to students, as well as to all staff in all of our schools. There is a pre and post-assessment that's part of the Choose Love program, and we're in the beginning phases of implementing the pre-test. We'll continue to monitor suspensions, restraints, and attendance data, and our mission for Integrated Support Team is to empower all students to attain their fullest potential in a respectful, safe, and supportive environment. In collaboration with students, family, and community partners, schools will guide students to become resilient, productive, and contributing members of their community. Thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to invite the Assistant Superintendents and Dr. Curly back up, or at least to the front row, because we're going to open it up for discussion to members of the committee, and I'm assuming that members are going to have questions probably for each of you. So at this time, I'd open up for any questions on the discussion. Mr. Hetzel?
Thank you, Mr. J. I just want to say, it's a good presentation. I think you have a solid plan. I'm confident in your ability to roll it out, and obviously we'll be monitoring from our position. There's a ton of stuff I could say about it. One thing I wanted to talk about was the Handle With Care. Excellent program. I'm happy that's in place. It really benefits the student who may have witnessed something dramatic the night before, and now, you know, everybody knows, like you said, TLC for that student, so that's great, and it really goes a long way of supporting that child. That's all I have to say. I look forward to seeing some of the stuff rolled out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hetzel. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, to Dr. Curly, I just, first of all, I want to commend the entire report. It just showed that overall, there's absolutely good growth happening system-wide. I'm really happy with that. What I'm not happy with is the headline that appeared in the local newspaper about a week and a half ago, that pasted our school system, whole system, as one of non-growth, and like we had all kinds of problems. But you guys presented a much different picture here tonight. I was especially perturbed when, two days after our report in the Herald News, that two days after that, Diamond got a really great report. So it served as a very stark contrast in our community that the Fall River Public Schools are not doing well, but Diamond's doing great. I have to completely disagree. I think based on not only the report you guys gave us tonight, which I see is very encouraging, I want to know, Dr. Curly, according to the numbers that you presented, do other gateway cities have comparative numbers, such as a city like Brockton, a city like New Bedford, or a city like Lawrence, anything like that? Are those numbers looking similar to ours in these growth areas?
We do have numbers that I didn't include here with respect to urban schools in a district that was shared among that network, where we, it looks, what we see is that we have more schools identified, a higher percentage of schools identified within our district in terms of, you know, their percentile scores and requiring assistance. But we are like outpacing the other communities in terms of the amount of progress we're making toward targets. So every school, every district gets very personalized targets, and in Fall River, our schools are doing a much better job in terms of meeting targets and being in this category that says we're improving or better. We're meeting a higher percentage of our targets than other communities like ours.
I thank you for that. In our district, I perceive some of the issue as one of demographics, and I'm not using that as an excuse. It's just a fact. There's so many transitional students and not a very high level of teacher retention that contribute to the inconsistencies in some of our scores. So I want the general public to understand that we're dealing with factors sometimes out of our control. Every classroom that I've had an opportunity to visit in the past couple of years, I've been thoroughly impressed with the level of instruction I see going on between teacher and students. I'm also impressed with the level of classroom management I'm also witnessing. I'm seeing students engaged. I'm seeing students working in teams with the workshop model. I'm seeing them come up with answers. They're very resourceful. I see teachers look very enthusiastic. So the picture I get physically, and then I read that headline in the newspaper, and it just gets me, you know, it gets my Lebanese up, you know, and I get my temper flying because then I start cussing all of that. But I want to commend you, and I know that these numbers are hard figures, and I see my friend Matthew DeMaris, the principal at Durfee High School, here in the crowd, and I spent a lot of my career at Durfee High School, and I know the numbers look tough there, but we're working to our capacity. We're not failing our students. We're working to a great capacity to serve students instructionally, socially-emotional, and as well as our sped services. We're not perfect. There is room for improvement, but I want the public to understand, we're working diligently on changing these numbers. We're moving the needle forward, and I know with the new Chapter 70 formula coming down the pike, we're going to have more financial resources to address some very critical needs. So I want to commend you all. I'm not done yet. I needed to know, can we be invited on any of those learning walks? That might go on to Dr. Carlson. Can we be informed of some learning walks and potentially participate?
Absolutely. I can send out, even tonight, we have a list of every single learning walk and date and time. That would be absolutely, I'd probably go ahead and send that through Dr. Malone's office, and he can share those with you.
Thank you. And to Superintendent Loesch, I was very pleased to see in your assessment, when it comes to professional development, you and I have been talking directly about training up the paraprofessionals who work in your sped department. I think it's incredibly important, and I noticed that you addressed that tonight. It really made me happy to see that. That is what is going to continue to help our classroom instruction move forward and deal with all of the demands of a student's IEP. Thank you for that. And for Dr. Dargan, as one who spent his career in social-emotional, I'm really pleased to see that we've taken on the philosophy of Choose Love and to use the four pillars as such. And these four pillars are the pillars that would help young minds develop a sense of character and a sense of values within their own selves, driven by the mentors, the advisors, the teachers, and the counselors around them. If we can continue to espouse this philosophy in our school district, we will see, we will see great things moving forward. I want to thank you for your diligence in moving the needle for social-emotional learning. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Mr. Martins?
First off, I thank you for all the work that we're putting in this presentation. It certainly is an effort and a half. I have a few questions that you, on where it says, keep in mind on the pace that you had. It makes reference to weighted average for two, of two years, 60% for 2019. And as you go through what was provided to us, and there's weighted averages there, how is the weighted, what does that mean, and how is it calculated?
If I could ask Dr. Curly to stay with us? Thank you.
So the weighted average piece for the district ended up being not as important because in 2018, we earned 42% of our target points, and then in 2019, we earned 42% of our target points. So when the weighted average had no impact, and so that's why I didn't speak of it too much. But at the school level, it makes a difference because you, if you met 40% of your targets in 2018, they would take that 40% and multiply it by .4. And then if you met 80% of your targets in 2019, they'd take that 80% and multiply by .6, and then adding those two together, come up with the weighted average. Something similar happens in terms of percentiles, so that whatever percentile ranking you had in 2018 is weighted at 40%, whatever percentile ranking you had in 2019 is weighted at 60%, and those two pieces are added together.
I appreciate the explanation went a little fast.
Oh, sorry.
Nevertheless, it's all right.
Sorry.
Nevertheless, I'd like to be able to see that in writing.
Sure.
As to how the weighted averages come out to be on several averages in here.
Okay.
Going on into here, what is it? It's in the Office of Instruction, and there's a double asterisk there for three.
Directors of Curriculum.
If I can find it.
It was the double asterisk for the Directors of Curriculum.
I'm sorry?
It was the double for the Directors of Curriculum.
Okay, now, is this, I didn't see where the asterisk is made reference to in here.
No, that was just, I was doubly excited to tell you that we, the addition of our Directors of Curriculum were a key, important addition to the Office of Instruction.
Okay, so this you already have.
I did not make any reference to them except for right next to it.
So this you already have, and now I hit to have three more?
Nope.
While I agree with all of this, here it is, the addition of three Directors of Curriculum. I believe that all of the things that the Fall River Public Schools is doing is certainly My problem is for what is being done, okay? Is that sufficient in regards to increasing student learning? I don't see anything in here that makes reference to the proficiencies of students in here, and I'm kind of surprised of that with the superintendent. And at your, stay at your seats, I did, since I live alone, and nights are kind of long and lonely, I like the educational research, so I did. All right? And you're at a disadvantage because of the fact that you don't have a copy of it, I guess, but nevertheless, when you go to the exceeding and meeting expectations for basically Grade 10, the high school, because all of the MCAS tests from middle school, elementary and middle schools, all of that, sure, they tell you what's going on there, but the end one on Grade 10 is the one that everything else is trying to build into. Would you agree with that?
I would agree. In the old system, it was all about.
Could you talk to the microphone?
I'm sorry. In the old system, I would definitely say that that would be accurate, but because there's different indicators now that make up the overall accountability, I would say that it's not just the MCAS assessment anymore.
But nevertheless, that is an indicator.
It is one of them, yes. Yes.
Okay, no matter how you cut it, that's an indicator of student learning.
Absolutely, and a very important one.
I didn't do all of them. All I did was exceeding and meeting expectations, okay? For all of the schools within the city. Also, part of this is that there's something that may be old, but still in existence, and that is Composite Performance Index, CPI.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
The question is that CPI, although in old measure, is still in existence as a current measure.
I'm not, for science, yes.
For English, language arts, for math and science?
Yeah.
Is it? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. The answer is yes. All right, it does, okay. I took the liberty, it's something I've been doing every single year, back when my computer only allows about 10 years of data on it as far as a graph is concerned, and on the last page of that document that I passed out, which Superintendent handled to you, is a graph from 2009 to 2019. You can see that you can chip it any way you wish in there. But the, if you were to look on the first few pages of it, you can see on the individual schools and the years, 2016, 17, 18, and 19, the.
Mr. Martins, are you, it looks like your graph and what you're talking about is that we've been flatlined, or we've been, there's been no real change, significant change.
You're right.
Is that what you're trying to say?
That's right.
Okay.
Absolutely so.
I would agree.
All right. Now, I guess the next question is that, if that is the case, you know, and I believe in professional development. I believe in social-emotional learning. I believe in all of these things, all right? I also believe that the, Durfee expects a present deep preparation of students from the middle schools. The middle schools require the preparation of students from the elementary grades. So where do you put your money? As far as I'm concerned, again, I'll use the time to indicate that, hey, let me ask you a question here. Take a particular, any particular classroom, except the APs, if the whole class is AP, which then they should be going like crazy, I'm sorry, going like crazy, and no stopping these students, keep on going. What would be the average class, number of students in a class?
Average class size, 26. 26, give or take.
26, okay. Would that class have perhaps one student who has a one-on-one pair of?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question, sir.
The question is, on that hypothetical.
Do we have classes that have one-to-one pairs? Is that what you're asking? Are you asking if we have classes with one-to-one pairs?
No, on this imaginary class that you have, okay? Average is 26 students. Let's assume that, is it possible that that would, perhaps that class would have one student with a one-on-one IEP required?
I'm sure that we could come up with a lot of hypotheticals.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure what you're asking, sir.
I'm asking, is there, is it possible to have one student in that class with 20? I'm asking, is there, is it possible to have one student in that class of twenty-six to have a one-on-one para?
As written in their IEP, if that is a requirement of their IEP, yes, that is absolutely.
Yes, okay, all right. And that para is to help the student both physically if necessary, and academically if necessary as well.
If that is written into their goals and objectives, yes.
Yes, okay. So, now you're down to twenty-five, okay? All right. Of the twenty-five students, is there a possibility of having students in there, that class, that are, um, have an IEP, but, you know, they, doesn't require a one-on-one?
Yes. You could have a class, an inclusion class, that have kids that range from, it could be a sophomore class, but kids' abilities range from first grade all the way to tenth grade and beyond.
Okay, okay. Approximately how many students? Five?
According to my, when I was a special education district coordinator, there are, there is no cap at the number of inclusion special education students in a class. However, in the district, we say that we do not want more than, what was it? We max out at ten.
Ten, okay.
But that would not necessarily mean that they have an IEP, you're talking about an IEP as all students have a deficiency for academics, because we have IEPs, students on IEPs for emotional disabilities, learning disabilities, visual, hearing, there's, I believe fifteen different categories?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, nine different categories, so, if you're, it would be dependent on their needs.
Okay, so, there'd be one additional para in that classroom for those ten students?
Not necessarily, sir. If you had an, if it was an inclusion class generally, inclusion classes have a general education teacher and a para, and then in your scenario, you had a one-on-one as well.
Okay, of which case, now you're down to fifteen.
Okay.
Okay, of which case now, those fifteen students that are there, regular, they're kids, God bless them all, of which case, they're not getting the information, they're not understanding the information as to the extent that we want them to do. So, now, I can go back. We had a classroom, a classroom para, or two classroom paras assigned to each teacher or by class, by needs of a class in there, those scores would go up.
If they were trained in the core content and understanding of delivery of standards?
Well, of course, that's, you have the professional development, I'm, I'm not against professional development, as a matter of fact, I like the idea, and I only saw it once in here, and that was for special education, that there would be professional development for paras and new teachers.
We are actually doing it district-wide, so all paras teachers will be, have course offerings at our district, two district offerings, which, first one's November fifth.
We have spent a lot of money on professional development, on other issues, all money that's spent well, but there's a finite amount of money. But yet you want to have the expectations, meeting and exceeding expectations to go up, and the, you know, below, not meeting expectations, and, I'm sorry, that's, those two last ones, below expectations and not meeting expectations. You want that to go down, and you want the other two to go up, uh, in there. I don't want to be nasty, but, you know, it looks like, from what I see here, that it's more of the same. And there's a certain definition for, uh, what more of the same actually ends up being, You want to have a, a change, you better make some changes, otherwise you remain the same. You were flatlined, as you indicated, looking at the graph. Is that going to happen next year, and the year after, and the year after?
So, I would just recall the, the committee back to the one slide in regards to our three ANET schools, and the fact that they met seventy-five percent of their targets, I would not call that flatlining, though their overall proficiency rates were, have, did show improvement, we are showing substantial growth with those schools, I wouldn't say that that's the definition of insanity, but it's definitely showing great, strong improvement.
If you get the scores of elementary grade students higher than what they are now, there's a couple of schools that are fantastic, really are high, okay? And again, sometimes you may have to rob people to pay for them, but looking at the district as a whole, and I don't want to compare Doc, uh, Fall River with any other school district, I, I'm interested in Fall River, Fall River Public Schools, of which case, you know, if you increase the elementary grades' expectations up higher, and I, I mean the, the achievement of those, those bigraphs called expectations, exceeding expectations, meeting expectation, get that to go up higher, then that will affect, and that's on all students, all of the individual groupings of students, get that, because they all come out, all participate in making the, the composite amount. Now, if that goes up, then all the other, over the, over our continuous years, then the middle schools will go up, the Dershowitz will go up, the dropout rate as the students are receiving or achieving better, that will go down, and the graduation rate will go up.
That's the idea.
On that, all right. I thank you for the work that you've done here, uh, if you're not willing to make changes, and you're not willing to stick your head out of a, you know, I like to use the analogy of a turtle, right? A turtle isn't going to go anywhere until it sticks its head out of the shell, and then the turtle can move, otherwise it's going to stay there. You know, I once rescued a turtle on Brayton Avenue, a fairly large turtle, right, just crossing the road, and cars were wishing around it, one car with a lady in it stopped to try and stop the traffic, I pulled my vehicle over, as a matter of fact, I blocked a couple of lanes, I got out of it, I grabbed a hold of the turtle, and the turtle was frightened, and its head was in the shell, and so it's going to move until the car would practically run over and kill it. I picked the turtle up, it was a pretty large turtle, picked it up, walked across the, the Brayton Avenue, and put it into the water, okay? Well, the analogy is, you better stick your head out. I am there, and if you're not willing to, no, deliver, I won't say that, uh, you need to make, you need to make changes, it's got to be within your elementary grades in order to be able to, uh, improve, and there's certainly, uh, there is a finite amount of money available, and now how can you get your biggest bang for your buck? And as I said earlier this evening, that are the para professionals, trained para professionals. Thank you very much, and I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, and Mr. Coogan, and then Mr. Agia.
Thanks for letting me follow that lovely turtle discussion, Mr. Chairman. What I do want to say is, this is a unique time for the Fall River Public Schools because of the infusion of money that the state has decided to extend to all of the gateway communities. I believe that when I look at this plan, I see a lot of different things in it, I believe using ANET across the board is going to start to significantly impact the scores. I do see, in all the schools I'm going to, unless I'm looking at the wrong things, I see co-teaching, I see paras, in almost every classroom I'm in, it's rare that I'm in a room alone when there's not two adults in a room. So, it's my position that if we follow this roadmap that you guys laid out for us tonight, and people with fidelity use the tips for instruction, professional development, special needs, we can start to improve the scores in this district. I don't think we've ever seen an infusion of money like this from the state, I think they're giving it to us because they know we're under unique circumstances where we have to flip these scores around, they acknowledge it, we acknowledge it, and I'm thinking it starts tonight, and I think we should get the show on the road, and I, I commend the report, and I hope we can implement eighty percent of what you guys showed us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coogan, Mr. Agia?
Yes, sir, just a couple of questions and comments. I will agree with my colleague to my left, related to money, I think resources have been better over the, not only the last year, but since probably the last three or four years or five years. First time I was on this committee, we used to cut budgets every year, it's amazing how we piece together and all the workers and the principals and everyone piece together in education system with how limited we were with funds, it was unbelievable. So, getting on this committee, seeing that we actually can add positions and targeted interventions and all that stuff was, was really great. At the same time, though, when there's more money, you get to wonder, are we making the progress that's needed with that money? And I would say, as a general statement, I'm not personally satisfied with where our numbers are right now, but I don't think any of the administration or the principals or the teachers really are satisfied with it. So, I know that people are out there working hard, the principals are working harder than ever, we're giving them the resources, so it's not a negative in any way, people are really busting their butts to try and make a difference here, but it's a challenging job right now, the work, the, the kids are coming in more difficult than ever, so the scores are the scores and the ratings are the ratings, but there's good work happening in the schools, so I feel real comfortable, you know, saying that, but we do have work to do. So, when we look at that, I just had a couple of questions, one was based on what the Assistant Superintendent said about the curriculum coordinators, can you just clarify where they're working? I thought you had mentioned something that was different than what we approved, but...
No, the three different curriculum court, or Directors of Curriculum, we have one who is ELA in math at the secondary level, we have ELA in math at the elementary level, and a K through twelve Director for Science.
And Social Studies.
And, well, Siobhan, I'm just talking about the three we added on, Siobhan is still K through eight for Social Studies, and she works with Mike Costa at the high school, who is the dean.
So, we have all twelve covered, it's not just, it doesn't end at eight?
No.
That was a little different than what we originally did, but I think you guys tried to articulate why, to meet the quality of the individuals that were there, so I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but I thought you mentioned that one was at the high school and the other ones weren't, so it were K to twelve now, correct?
Yes.
The other thing that I would say is, and this would probably be, I think I can read this right, but the district's criterion reference target percentage is forty-two percent, is that what?
Yes.
That's the district one? So, you know, when we look at goals, we're going to be looking at that later, but in the 2018-2019 goal was, the Fall River Public Schools will demonstrate targeted improvement by meeting and/or exceeding the criterion reference target percentage of seventy-five percent. So, is that forty-two percent the relative number to that sentence? Okay. The only other thing I would say is, I do agree with the ANET, I want to say that was a good thing, and we talked about it at instructional subcommittee, you had mentioned that it's being implemented, I think we, I thought we paid for it for all schools?
We did, for the assessment platform.
Is there, like, other sections, because I thought you said some are implementing...
They are, so, we have a full partnership with now six of our schools, and then the rest of the schools have the, the tools, and we are modeling the coaching cycles after what ANET's doing at our partnered schools, but only six of the schools have the full, the full enchilada.
And why is that? Is it money?
Originally, we were, we partnered with our three turnaround schools, we added on three more at the end of last year because they were in status, and then we wanted to add on Green this year because they went below the ten percent mark. We've also had change in leadership new to Fall River, so we wanted to support them. But I would say that we did not have the coaching at every single school because of established coaching models at different schools, we thought that these were the most needy of our schools, we also didn't want to implement a system without testing it and seeing whether or not it was successful, so we're kind of, the whole idea is we roll it out, and once, for example, ANET in year one provided professional development at schools, in year two, they coded it, and this year, our instructional leads are leading it with their behind-the-scenes support. So, the whole idea is that the ANET coaching model is at a school for only so long, and then, once we build that capacity at the buildings, they move out. So, the schools that we have it at are the ones that we've identified the greatest need.
So, the schools that don't have it, the full program, do they want it? Have they requested it, would they use it?
I personally have not gotten a request from any schools, I think different schools have asked, you know, about different possibilities, but really what we have utilized thus far is the assessment system, but I haven't had a request to have the full partnership, I think the only school that requested it, we, adding Allen.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be one to, if we're going to do it, let's do it, because what ends up happening, and at least it's happened like this in the past, is we give supports to one school that has the need, then guess what happens? They make progress, the other schools don't, and then we're starting over again. So, if you're saying that a full program is what's the best for kids, then I don't know why we don't just implement, uh...
Well, one of the things that we added on were the Directors of Curriculum, who are working heavily with schools as a whole, but also modeling the same practices that our ANET partners are modeling with the coaching and instructional leads within our partnered schools. So, it's, they may not have the person from ANET, but they have the same tools and resources that we're modeling across the district.
Yeah, are you, I think you had mentioned something about the ELL scores, or was that not mentioned under you?
So...
Somebody mentioned the scores related to English Language Learners or the new name?
So, the English Language Learners have been moved underneath my department this year, but no, last year they were not under my department.
So, in the next steps, can you just articulate again, because I might have missed the slide, what is the plan for the, we need to make progress in that field?
Absolutely. So, we actually just had a, a meeting today, what we're looking at is, we're looking at having some coherence across the district for our foundations classroom as a first start. So, we have reach within our elementary schools and edge in our secondary schools, what we're really focusing on right now is a team of educators have come together to look at how we're rolling out the reach product within our schools, but also how we're tying on the phonics program, whether or not we're going to use straight out from reach, or whether or not we want to supplement. We did an inventory of the different schools and found that different schools are supplementing the reach in different ways, we're trying to kind of build that coherence across the district. So, I've been working very closely with Fernanda and her team, we're also looking at how she and her team are providing resources across the district. And then the last thing, at the high school level, very, very, in particular, as I've been working with Mr. Damaris, to look at how we are providing coaching and support at the high school level. Ms. Souza, who has been the department head for not only world languages, but ELL, is new to the ELL world, so what we're really trying to do is to get more direct services at the high school to support the teachers in those foundational classrooms. As a whole, to be perfectly honest, because our inclusion Ls make up a larger percentage, is we're really focusing on the core instruction, tier one, and then how to differentiate so that there's equal access to all kids in order to be successful within the class. So, all of our professional development that I talked about earlier is really centered and focused around the workshop model, where during the work time, how can we differentiate? And some of our schools that are in the audience have already started to do these things, such as the wind blocks, so what I need now, and that's really just using data, ongoing data, in order to intervene quicker. So, it's not just specific to our L population, but also our special education. So, Mr. Loesch and I have been collaborating on the Orton-Gillingham, which he also talked about, which is just a different way to teach students that are having a hard time with the core and accessing the core. So, there's, it's, it's...
Yeah, I didn't mean to go, have you go on, I just didn't recall seeing a focus on that particular piece, it sounds like you have some plans?
Yes.
Maybe we can get something on the separate cover?
Absolutely.
Saying what the plan is. My one question, though, was you said about resources across the district, what is a foundation room, and is it, are all they all created equal?
Foundation rooms are for students who have an access score of one to, I mean, to, up to two point three, one to three. So, this could be new to the country... So this could be new to the country or new to the district, who have an access score that's below three.
So that's how you get into it? What about, where are they? Are they at every school?
We have different tracks at different schools. So some schools do not have foundational classrooms and others could. It was dependent on open classrooms.
What is the staffing in those rooms?
So we have a teacher and a para in every single foundational classroom.
Maybe she might want to clarify that.
Yeah, let Fernanda come down and answer that, but the question, it used to be, three years ago, we had one strand at the Laterno School. We now have strands at Laterno, Green, Viveras, and five schools across the district.
At Henry Lord, we have a split foundational programs, meaning we have K one, two, three, four, five. At Viveras, we still have one, which is the four, five grade.
My question is more along the lines of if we've expanded it to five different schools? Is the, are the resources the same in each of those classrooms, so?
No, we have been outfitting schools as we add classrooms.
So what is the need there?
I'm sorry?
If you said no, what is the need and where is that need articulated to the committee?
We're focusing on English, like, on ELA, so we're using the reach program and we have been...
He's asking the question, is the model the same in all the classrooms?
Yes, the model is the same in all the classrooms. We, what we're looking at is proficiency levels. So proficiency levels, according to WEEDAS standards, is one through six. So we broke it down from one to three, which they need a lot more support.
If, if, and, there's any foundation rooms in this, in the city? If you gave me the list of twenty places, each one of those has a para, is what you're telling me?
No, sir.
So they're not the same?
Absolutely not.
But you just said they were the same.
I said in terms of how we decided to, to set up these classrooms in terms of levels. They are the same.
Correct, no, I understand, so let me just get right...
In terms of support and resources, no, but we worked...
So right now, we have money that we're going to spend in this district.
Yes.
We know that's a need. Everybody says it all the time. So my question was, if we say that a foundation room at his school has a teacher and a para in the room, and a foundation room in my school has a teacher and no para, and then in his school it has a teacher and a para. That's what I'm trying to get at. Is that the case or is it all the same?
No, I was correct in stating that. I'm sorry, but not every single foundational class has a para at this time.
There you go. Yes or no? What's the answer?
No.
I thought we had a para in every single class. We don't?
That's right. Not everyone.
So how many don't? When we built this budget, we put a teacher and a para in those foundation rooms. Did we not?
We, I believe we have one or two classrooms that do not have a para, and that's a, but...
Tonight, we're asking for two paras.
Sure.
I guess, I mean, I think we're all on the same page. If the model should be that we have a teacher and a para in every room for the level of need in that classroom in his school, should be the same as my school, is the same as his school.
Yes.
So I think we're all on the same page. If you need more, come to us because we're spending money. So if those are needs, let's spend the money on those type of things, rather than on other stuff that we're just, you know, willy-nilly. So I think we're all on the same page, but I hope we get that clarified. And with that, I just want to echo the statement that I made. People are working hard. Keep up the good work. The scores aren't satisfying to me or anybody, but really, I know that people are busting their butts, the teachers, the paras, the counselors. Just keep up the good work. We appreciate it. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Taggia. We're going to go to our student delegate, Ms. Barrows, and then go over to Mr. Corey, who had a question.
I actually wanted to speak on this matter because I am someone who's actually benefited from programs such as these, as I was an English language learner when I first moved here. And I do have connections to a variety of different types of students who have been in these programs and who are currently in them. And one thing that I always get from different students is complaining on how they don't feel like they're being reached. But what I saw from this presentation and even looking at the numbers, yes, the numbers may not always be exactly what you want them to be, but I see that there's action being taken. And I think that that's all that students can really ask for. And I love to see that action is being taken on different perspectives as well and from different varieties to make sure that all different students are getting reached and not just one. And that was really it, and I just commend you for your effort. And I do want to say that it is, it's benefiting students. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Barrows. You want to follow that, Mr. Corey? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Barrows, for weighing in on that. That helps to give it such a healthy perspective. Thumbs up. So Dr. Carlson, I just have a hypothetical question. If we're able to build on this, in our budget for the future, greater teacher retention, what do you theorize would happen with curriculum?
I think our teachers are our greatest asset. I think that they're the experts within their classroom, but it's very difficult with turnover to retrain on every single aspect of our teaching and learning. I think that we would only grow collectively. We would only build, building capacity and we would see greater increases in our results.
So as you were reporting out, it caught my attention when you said that because we're losing teachers at the rate we do, then that retraining is, is getting them ramped up to the levels where everybody else is at for our system and for our demographic. So teacher retention is, is a key to developing some consistency across the board for, for all of this that you're trying to achieve.
And it's not just that we lose teachers. We have teachers that transition to different roles. So we were talking about this today with our foundation teachers. We have some teachers that have been teachers, but they were not foundational teachers. So they have no acts, they have no background knowledge with reach, which is a whole different way of teaching students. So I think that, yeah, ongoing professional development. I know we hear that a lot. We spend a lot of money on it. But in any field, you have to develop your people so that they can become the best at what they, they need to be at.
So we need to focus on teacher retention moving forward in the future. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. There's a lot that's been said. I'll keep it real brief. With respect to teacher retention, I think we have done that work. We haven't given pink lips out a number of years now. Doesn't mean that we don't lose teachers. Doesn't mean that they don't transition out of district, but I think it has been a focus of this committee and your administration, Dr. Malone, to retain teachers for that very reason. Turnover causes a lot of instability, not just in education and any profession. So we need to keep our eye on that and find out exactly. And we've talked to Mr. Coogan in the past about exit surveys and strategies and trying to figure out why are we losing our staff? And what are those reasons? So that this committee can establish policy or take a look at collective bargaining agreements or whatever the case may be to try to retain those individuals. Because it does, it is costly to retrain people. It is somewhat disruptive and if people are moving from role to role, we need to do better, I guess, across training so that people understand their roles better. So I will say that, I will say that, you know, a lot of emphasis is put on this report to the committee. There's a lot of emphasis put on school districts by the state regarding the accountability of the data that just was presented to us. But the fact of the matter is that's one measure. One measure of all the work that's done in a classroom gets summed up in this document. We have principals here who are sitting here, who may not be in a category they want to be in. But the reality is that if we all went to work every day and were measured by one measure and that was it, how many of us would, would, you know, meet the, the standards that we need to? And so I'm, I'm, listen, the reality is that we have work to do. I didn't hear any excuses, and trust me, I've sat through about fourteen of these presentations over my tenure, and I've heard some excuses in the past. What I heard tonight was that we know there's an issue and there's a plan in place and there are going to be people responsible for making that happen. That's the role of this committee to make sure that that happens. You know, I think the, the bill that's before our legislature is going to be a game changer. Because we've all asked for the playing field to be leveled. It's going to be leveled now. When you infuse fifteen million dollars in a school system, there should be no more unlevelled playing field. We should be able to meet those needs of our English language learners, of our special needs population. We should be able to, be able to spend the money necessary to cover our health insurance costs. It will be a game changer for Fall River, and I'm looking forward to discussing with this committee and the administration how to use that money so it gets into the classroom. If we know ANET's working, let's make it district-wide policy that each of the schools use ANET. And I know it comes with a cost, but everything that I heard here today, professional development, the different strategies that we're using, majority of those come with some sort of resource attached to it anyway. And so if your hypothesis you said was correct, that the schools using ANET, you saw an improvement, then shame out of us for not making that a priority for this district to infuse those funds. And not just infuse funds, but make sure we're holding everybody accountable to using it, as someone mentioned, with fidelity. It's one thing to implement a program, but if it's not implemented properly and the support and training's not there, what's not being monitored properly, and we're not making changes if we see there's a need, the program's never going to work. I don't care what you put in a classroom. So, you know, I will just end with this, that the schools that are in the focused targeted support area and the broad comprehensive support area, they know who they are. We know the work that needs to get done. If there are services or, or, you know, resources, I should say, that are needed for those schools, then I would ask those principals to go through their chain of command and get that information before this committee so we can make some decisions. We still have one-time money available. We're going to talk later about the innovation fund for schools to access funding to improve their school, improvement plans. It's a great time to start talking about what the needs are and how we're going to address that financially. So let's not, you know, dwell on the fact that we have some of these issues. Let's stay focused and, and keep working at it. I think the fact of the matter is, given our changing population, some could argue that flatlining isn't a bad thing with a district like Fall River. I know it's tough to say. People say, what, is he crazy? Okay, I said it. Maybe flatlining a district with the transient population we have and the, the needs we have and the funding, available resources that we have, maybe flatlining isn't necessarily a terrible thing. But I think there's work to be done. I've heard some plans in place. Let's implement those and, and let's measure how we're doing. And hopefully, we'll start to turn the tide on this. I'll give the last word to Dr. Malone and then if there are any further conversation, we'll move on.
I appreciate the fact that you commented that, you didn't hear any excuses. We, we're not here to make excuses. We know the data is something that we're never going to be satisfied with. And I think we got some hungry warriors out there who will not be satisfied with whatever these results are or what they may be. You are absolutely right. There was sophisticated analysis of the data would suggest that over time, given the changes and, and ups and downs of different transient populations, newcomers, threefold in a short period of time, and we've maintained a certain level. And in some areas, if you're really talking to psychometric analysts, they're going to say, that's actually growth. We're not satisfied with it. We have a plan in place. We continue to move forward. We're going to make sure that those rooms have what they need. The reason why we didn't bring forward ANET across the board, because it was going to be too much at once. I rolled out slowly the first year with the three, with the first, with the two Level Four schools. And then we grew. Tonight, you actually voted to increase the green that was part of the contract to go district-wide. I'm looking at approximately another hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's something that we may bring back. It's not to vote on tonight, but that may be something that we bring back. I don't want to put ANET right now in schools that perhaps have, what Dr. Carlson mentioned, a really good coach model. We have the curriculum and the assessments in place for all the schools, but it's that additional coaching part. There's a time crunch with that and a lot of schools already have their improvement plans. And, you know, they've already begun the year with that. Having said that, we'll come back and have that conversation with the committee in November, once we have more conversations with our team. And that's something that there's still money unallocated that could be used for that purpose. And just to, Mr. Martin, you know, I love you. I think you're, you know, I'm sorry to see that you're not running again this year and I greatly enjoyed working with you. I'm doing my best to make sure that we have the paras in the right season. I know you've mentioned that several times and you've said, you know, but it's not a, it's not an either or. It's not professional development or paras. It's got to be both. And, and, and that's really, if you can think about what our strategy's been long-term, it's both the training and providing those additional capacity of resources to make sure that in the classroom level, our teachers are supported and have what they need. We have had some problems this year with some paras that left and, and the ability to fill. We have a new training in place that Dr. Doggins put in for all new hires of paras. That will be a two-day training for everyone that we bring in. This is all going to be beneficial to us. Next year, and again, you know, Mark's right, and I've been doing, I don't know, probably been a superintendent as long as you've been a school committee member in three different places. And sometimes you're right, it does get frustrating because every year we come in, particularly in the gateway cities, and we're always in the same place. But here's the kicker. Guess who else is in the forty-second percentile? Diamond, what was their headline compared to what ours was? And that was the frustrating part. I know you're a great alum there and so are you and Joe's a former superintendent. But I care about Fall River Public Schools. And it would have been nice, and I just want to say, I called the paper out on it. Guy sent me an email back apologizing. They didn't correct it, but he did apologize because they understood that. But that's the reality. We're not doing well enough, but guess what? No one's beating us right now. And when you look at the other districts around the Commonwealth, we're all within that same band. And the truth of matter is, communities that are funded at a hundred percent or below or slightly above will always be in that band. And that's why it's such an important thing that we get this bill passed so we can really get the resources in place that we know will make a difference. Different districts that are kicking butt on huge achievement scores, we know what they're funding at. A hundred and thirty percent of net school spending, a hundred and forty percent of foundation. We're not there yet, but we're going to get there. It's going to be a long walk and we need tough people in place. I got some tough people. I know the parents are going to hold us accountable and I know this committee's going to hold us accountable. We don't make excuses. We don't point fingers. We don't blame. We just do. We'll get the results. It will come. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Dr. Malone. That ends the presentation, the discussion. Thank you, each of you, for your time. I'm going to ask the committee if they would consider taking Agenda Item Nine out of order. I know there are some individuals who, during citizen input, had made a request of the committee for some resources. I believe there may be some discussion related to that and potential, a potential motion. So is, is any objection to taking Nine out of order? Here are none. So Agenda Item Number Nine is a discussion and vote to approve the expenditure of the Puerto Rico U.S. Virgin Island relief funds as referred by the Finance Subcommittee presented by Dr. Kevin Al, excuse me, by CFO Kevin Almeida.
So, so in your packets, we have a breakdown of Puerto Rico funding as it currently stands and, sorry. Puerto Rico funding from FY nineteen totaled just under a million dollars.
How much was that?
It totaled just under a million dollars. Nine hundred eighty-three thousand, nine thirty-eight. I, item number, no, it's out of order, but item number eight commits two hundred thousand dollars, potentially leaving us a balance of seven hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. What we have proposed for approval tonight is two hundred thousand dollars in contingency, a seventy-four thousand, two sixty-eight for an ELL department head at Durfee, twenty thousand dollars towards a Spencer Board and Inclusion Playgrounds, and twenty thousand towards the Green School Playgrounds for a total of three fourteen, two sixty-eight. After that's said and done, it would leave us with just under four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the Puerto Rico funds to be allocated.
Thank you, Ms. Almeida. Is there a motion to approve?
I have a question for you.
Motion by Mr. Corey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hatso. Discussion, Mr. Corey.
Mr. Vice Chair, looking, looking at the breakdown of this, the funding here, I, I have a question in the form of a motion. Can we look at the unexpended funds here to think about using some funding to support the performing arts at our five middle schools?
So that would be the, the will of the committee. The motion before the committee is, is on the expenditure of the funds that are before us, but certainly, if you'd like to make a second motion to that effect, once this, once this is disposed of.
I'm suggesting, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm suggesting a ten thousand dollar allotment... I'm suggesting, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm suggesting a $10,000 allotment to each middle school and to be targeted for their performing arts.
So, is that in the form, let me just get this straight. Are you asking to amend the motion that's on the table? If not, I'm gonna ask that we dispose of the motion that's on the table, and then you can make that after, Mr. Corey.
Okay.
Just procedurally, I'm not sure. You're looking to make that separate?
Yes.
Or in the form of an amendment? Separate? Okay. Discussion on the motion that's before, that's on the table now, Ms. Agia.
So, the Item 2, School Innovation Improvement Funds, can we, I mean, the only thing we have in our pocket is this.
It's a separate agenda item. The fact that we took them out of order, there's an agenda item, we'll discuss that. That's actually Number 8. So, because we took 9 out of order?
Right. Can you, something quick?
So, you're looking for information about what that is?
Yeah, like, I'm just trying to.
Okay. So, so during the Finance Subcommittee meeting, it was discussed that there were some available funds in the Puerto Rico, U.S. Virgin Island money. I had met with the superintendent and proposed at the Subcommittee level, and it's before the committee now, to create a $200,000 fund that would essentially allow for each school in the district at the site level to prepare a request for funding that was aligned with their school improvement plans. And so, depending on what the needs are in each of our 16 schools, those schools with their either ILTs or with teachers bringing forward recommendations or principals making recommendations, they could actually apply in the form of a mini grant, if you will, to the superintendent's office. He's gonna have individuals who are going to review those proposals and then award money out of that fund to be used to make an impact in each of the school improvement plans. That's essentially that in a nutshell.
And I'm not opposed to it. I think it's, I think it's fine. It means $200,000 that we're spending, trying to put the whole thing in perspective. I think that the money, the proposal should come to the school committee, so we know here's the proposal for X, from X school, and then we can make that determination. Because I think we're just basically just saying we're gonna put $200,000 in and let the administration deal with it. I think if they, if it's truly an innovation and they wanna do like a creative program or, you know, come and show us something that they want, they should come before the committee to access those funds. Just my opinion. The other question would be on the ELL department head. Do we have a one pager or anything on that? Am I missing that?
The request for the ELL department head? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Ms. Agia? Excuse me, Ms. Almeida?
I've got it in front on, on the proposal here to approve tonight.
Yeah. Someone in the administration wanna speak to the need for that funding?
Yeah. What night are we on, Ms. Agia?
9.
Back on 9.
Number 9.
So, basically, what we talked about earlier was Durfee is a huge priority this year. Shelley Souza, who is the department head, splits her roles and responsibilities between the World Languages Department and the ever-increasing ELL Department. So, what we're looking at doing is separating those departments. She would remain as the World Languages and adding on a department head for Durfee for the ELLs. It is of note that Fernanda, with on her team, has a department head for our middle and elementary schools, but we do not have a dedicated role at the high school, and that is where we saw our greatest need.
Excuse my just being aggravated, but here's part of the problem. We sit on this committee. I'm not on the Finance Subcommittee. But the full committee doesn't get even a one-pager articulating why we need something with maybe some back history on the position, it used to exist and then it was gone, whatever. We get nothing. So, we just come, "Let's just approve it because it was said at the Finance Subcommittee, and let's just do it." I think we're at least worthy of a one-pager or some kind of thing to say, "Here's why we should spend this money." Where is the position, how is the position gonna be paid? What salary structure are they gonna be under?
They're gonna be paid under the FREA contract.
Yeah. So, a department head of the high school, which is now a Dean of Teaching and Learning, which we said we were gonna get rid of when we added all those positions, because they all got a bump and did less work.
No, we still, we still have department heads at the high school.
So, where is this gonna get?
2A.
It's not here. You know what I'm saying? It's just not here. And we, we don't get the information that we need to get in order to make an informed decision, quite frankly. And I'm really getting tired of it, and I think we need more information. So, I'll be voting against that, because I don't think, it's probably needed. Granted, it's probably needed, but I think.
It's huge. We had zero growth for our Ls.
It has nothing to do with the growth. It has nothing to do with anything. It has to do with a lousy presentation that you or the superintendent has presented to us. That's basically why I'm gonna vote against it. Not because of the need. You have an articulated need to the full committee.
That's great, Mr. Agia. You can vote against kids. Thank you. You've made your point.
So, the bottom line is, I think we need to have better presentations when something comes before us.
I hear you. I think the kids really, really need this. I think it would have a huge success. We've already seen in areas where we have that targeted support. I can't speak to the other side, but this is a huge need, and I know that the high school would greatly benefit from it.
And you.
And thank you for supporting it.
And you will acknowledge that we don't have that information here.
Um, I.
So, Ms. Agia, I will say this, that I agree with you that this committee should have all the necessary information it needs to make, recommend, to make informed decisions on votes. Ms. Almeida, going forward, I'm gonna ask, just as one member.
You got it.
Unless the committee doesn't, you know, agree with me on this, but I will say this, going forward, I'm gonna ask your office, when we have Finance Subcommittee meetings, if there's a vote to refer on any expenditure, that there be some background information attached to it, so that all members, whole body, has an understanding of. And to Ms. Agia's point, he's right. Subcommittee who sits there, we hear that dialogue. If you're not on a particular Subcommittee, you may miss that. So, I'm gonna ask, going forward, that any of those votes that are taken with a motion to refer has some supporting documentation accompanies that, so that all members of this committee have all of that information necessary when it comes to the full committee for a vote.
You got it.
Thank you. Ms. Agia, the floor shows.
Yeah. It just, I think I made my point clear, that it's just real frustrating. The other one is on the $200,000. I'd like to have the committee weigh in. I think it should come before us, the innovation money. If the committee feels that way, so be it. I think it's a good idea, but we're also, it's $200,000 that we wouldn't have a say in, so I'd rather have a say. So, it's up to the committee what they wanna do. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Agia. I would ask the superintendent that regardless if there are proposals that are funded with that money, that those proposals are forwarded to the committee for informational purposes, so that the committee knows where those dollars were, in fact, spent. Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Barnes?
I guess I lost track as to exactly where we're at. Are we on the budget for the remaining funds for the Puerto Rico, U.S. Virgin Islands?
That's correct. That's, yes, that's correct.
Good. I don't have any problem with, my, one problem, where it says contingency, $200,000. Now, there's another $200,000 was identified above where these schools write up proposals with the money to meet the school improvement plan. Be interesting to see just what the individual principals are asking for, for that money. So, I'd like to see that.
However. Ms. Martins, I've just, I've just asked the superintendent to provide that to the committee, that if money's expended from that particular line item, that that information be shared with the committee, the dollar amount and the particular plan, so that members have information as to how that money's being spent.
I'm sticking with the contingency. Contingency consisting of what?
Mr. Martins, when we came forward to the Subcommittee, we said, "Let's hold on that for future discussion about items that we may need." Now, tonight, we talked about ANET. That could be something that we look at with that money. So, we weren't gonna spend that money. It was gonna be contingency, meaning it's gonna sit unexpended, waiting for a committee decision.
Okay. I, however, I still would like to know a breakdown of that contingency.
It's gonna sit unexpended.
Being in the Subcommittee to have a breakdown of what the contingency is supposed to be dealt with.
So, from the, from the Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Martins, that money was to be unexpended. It's gonna stay there until the committee takes a vote on how it would like to use it going forward. There's no plan to spend it just yet. There hasn't been a proposal brought forward by the superintendent to this body for consideration to spend it. So, essentially, it'll be almost, I don't wanna say in a savings account, but it's gonna remain in that line item until the committee gives the superintendent some direction as to how to expend that money.
Well, that's fine. I agree with that, but I am there, but then are, are we to, what's, what's going to be done with relief to the, regards to the relief funds? Are they gonna be approved or gonna be held?
So, there is a motion on the table to approve what's been presented this evening, the expenditures that have been outlined by Ms. Almeida. That motion's been made and seconded. We're having a discussion on that. So, we will take a vote at some point to either approve or deny the request that's been brought forward by the administration this evening.
But then, that vote, which was already seconded?
Correct, yes.
Is for everything that's on that budget?
Everything in that particular item that was proposed. That's correct. So, that was the.
On Number 9, it was the contingency.
Correct.
The ELL department head.
ELL department head.
The Spencer Board and Playground and the Green School Playground.
Correct.
I didn't hear what you were saying from the superintendent.
Could you repeat those, Mr. Superintendent?
So, it's the $200,000 contingency, the Durfee ELL department head, Spencer Board and Inclusion playgrounds, and the Green School playgrounds.
I can understand the, what you just pointed to as the superintendent. I understand about the $74,000, the $20,000, and the $20,000. I don't have any problem with that. I have a problem with the contingency. Now, if this is a, if this vote is for all of that, this what it says right here on this page, then I wanna vote no, because I don't know what the contingency is. But if it's gonna be piecemealed of each individual line to pass, then I'll accept that part.
Right. So, the contingency fund is not before the committee for any vote to spend. It's gonna remain unexpended.
Correct.
In that particular line item until the committee gets some recommendations from the superintendent and his administration as to how to expend that. All you're taking action on tonight is to make the expenditures that are before you, which will leave that $200,000 as a balance in a contingency.
Okay. Is that all part of the motion and to be voted upon?
Yes.
Yes. So, if you take this vote in the affirmative, you're voting to approve what's been requested of us, and you're agreeing to allow that $200,000 to remain there for a future date for the administration to come back to us with how they intend to spend it. You're still gonna get an opportunity to weigh in on how that $200,000 contingency fund is spent. It's just there's no proposal now from the administration to the board.
Okay. I don't have any problem with it, as long as the contingency is frozen there.
Correct. It'll be unexpended.
And it will be thawed out at a later date.
Correct. It'll be unexpended until a presentation's made to the committee for approval. That's correct, Mr. Martins. Any further discussion on that? Ms. Agia?
Yeah, just two things. On that contingency, the $200,000, I do think that we need policy in this committee, that what you articulated, Mr. Vice Chair, is the actual thing. So, if we have a contingency line item, it's not meant to be spent without coming back to the committee. I think that's what you articulated, and which I agree with. Earlier in this budget cycle, that's not what happened. So, I do think we need to be consistent on the policy. I agree with what you said. We shouldn't spend contingency money in a school department budget without coming back to the committee for that vote.
So, the vote tonight, just let me be clear to Dr. Malone and Mr. Almeida, the committee's action tonight is not to establish that as a contingency fund for which the administration then goes spend out of that account.
Correct.
That money will be left there, and any future request will be brought to this committee, so we can take action on the expenditure of that money.
Yeah, I think that's, going forward, I think that's how it should be for all. My last question was on the department head, the 2A. Where did we get the $74,268 for the salary?
It's an 87, it's $87,000 broken down based on the number of days remaining for the school year.
Yep. Because there's all different numbers and.
Correct.
Do we have identified a person?
No.
No.
We'd have to post.
What is the job of the other, that's being split? What is that other job? For the foreign language, Dean of Teaching and Learning?
World Language will be its own department head, and we're gonna have sole designated focus for EL, with the other ones.
But I'm saying the foreign language is a Dean of Teaching and Learning, like the other department heads?
No.
At the high school?
No. It's a department head.
They get paid the lower amount?
Yes.
And you're recommending this also at the lower amount?
Yes.
I think I made my point clear. I'm not happy with it. You know, I do not wanna not support it, because I do think we have a need. I don't like the dialogue. I don't like the attitude that I was given when I asked a question, but I'm gonna vote for this for the good of the program. What I can say for the public, for you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Assistant Superintendent, I don't like the attitude that I was given back when I made a legitimate concern as a school committee member. My last point is, if we have contingency of 200, why don't we just add the 469, so that we have the contingency? We have a lot of like these, "Let's spend these monies down, and then we'll have this. Then we have these monies down, and we'll spend this." I've been asking for a few months to say, "What is our total money left in the, in the checkbook, per se, for us to spend? We have this much here, we have a little more there, we have some, during the budget thing, I have other questions. Why don't we just include all of the available funds in one line and say, 'Guys, this is what we've got, X dollars.'"
The color of money's different for some of it.
So, we couldn't take the 200 and just add to the 469?
We could, but we wanted to hold that 200 now in contingency in case I got something to bring forward. We still, I mean, we still haven't gotten to what we were about to talk about, Number 9. That's gonna decrease that, hopefully.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm gonna vote for it reluctantly, but I do think we need to get clarity on what we have available before we start deciding, "Let's just spend money on a whim."
But don't we give monthly apples to apples?
So, what we'll ask, Ms. Agia, hearing your concerns, again, unless the committee speaks otherwise, that going forward, Ms. Almeida, in your monthly budget report, if you can also just add a column or just some information about these one-time funding accounts, what the total balance remaining in those accounts is, so the committee has all of the information it needs regarding what's available for future expenditures.
I yield.
Does that cover it, Ms. Agia?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on Number 9? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mary Cora?
Mr. Corey, was there a secondary motion regarding?
Yes, there is, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to make a motion, you know, to support performing arts at our middle school level as a feeder program to the performing arts that's already being performed at Durfee High School. There's a definite need. Our school district has always been supportive of the arts throughout the decades, and we've been lauded for it by other school districts I know that are struggling to support their arts program. So I see some unexpended funds here. I'd like to make a motion to use some of these unexpended funds to support our five middle schools with $10,000 each for their, targeted for their performing arts program.
Corey makes a motion.
Second with a question.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzel. Discussion on that motion. Mr. Agia?
So what is the request? I'm not in favor of the support of the programs, but why is this coming to us now? And are they unfunded? I mean, what's the point of it now? And does anybody have more information than, because it seems like other people have more information than every other member. So what, can somebody come in?
Hold on a second, Mr. Agia. Let me just clarify something. I believe Mr. Corey's making this motion based on information he heard this evening at Citizens Input. I believe Ms. Costa outlined very clearly the needs that she's experienced and the resources that she's had to request or look for. I think Mr. Corey, and I won't speak for him, is responding to that this evening based on available funds that the committee may have to expend. As far as other members having more information, I'm not really sure where that comment was coming from because I'm giving you the background as I know it. You had two individuals speak tonight about a need in the district. Mr. Corey's making a motion based on funds that he is, as a member of the committee, knows is unexpended. As far as other information, if that was directed towards me as the vice chair or person running this meeting, then I would say that I take exception to that because I don't know of any other information.
My question is around, I don't disagree with the program.
Okay.
But when somebody comes before us and say they've been underfunded and the district hasn't funded them, it begs the question to say, why? Why has it been, when we have all this money, did the principal come forward with something? Do we pay any money for the current program? Do we have, is there any background info that we can say that's a valid concern or that's not?
Hold on. And so those are all legit questions? And if you're raising them, I'm going to ask the superintendent?
That's what I'm raising, because I think...
Okay, so I'm going to ask the superintendent?
I want to have the knowledge to vote for this.
Absolutely, and I don't disagree with that, Mr. Agia. So you've asked those questions. I'm now going to turn it over to the superintendent to answer those questions for you so you'll have that information. This isn't something that the superintendent or Ms. Almeida could have been prepared for. It's a response to a request that was made this evening to the committee during Citizens Input. So, Dr. Malone, if you would...
Right, so historically, we've relied on fundraising and beg, borrow, and stealing around our arts programs. Now that we have some additional abilities, we'd like to support our arts programs better, performing arts at the middle level as that bridge to the high school. I think that supporting it with 10 grand for each school's a good start. I can get some backup information for you as to what historically we funded the arts. And I know for a fact that the arts programs have asked me for additional dollars, and that's one of the reasons I think that's a good idea.
But it hasn't been presented to us in any of the four or five times that you've presented programs and program improvements and stuff through the budget. So I'm not opposed to it. It just begs the question of why is it, if it was such a need that you just articulated, why has it not come before this committee via the principals, the director of fine arts, or yourself when we say we have a need? I understand that the people came before us, they were very articulate. But it seems to me that there was some missing link between the people operating their schools and the programs and today.
So last year, last year we came forward and we funded athletics. You know, we put, invested a lot into infrastructure. And the arts infrastructure is lacking, and we'd like to invest more money in it. So it's not a question of, you know, why didn't we bring this forward earlier? There's a ton of needs in this system. We bring forward what we can when we identified monies. This is one of those things that we think is a good idea, we support it.
I mean, it's, I'm going to support it because I do think it's a need. I do think that we, once again, haven't gotten the right information. It shouldn't take somebody from the community to come down in citizen input time and articulate a need, and then us have to react to that need.
Well, that's, okay, but that's maybe half the truth, Kevin. Because we're out there visiting schools all the time and people have talked to us. In the past couple of weeks, we've heard a couple of times about the need in the arts program.
And my question is, why wasn't it in the agenda? I hear what you're saying. We're on the same page. We want to fund the arts. All I'm saying, and take it as constructive criticism, bring it back to your team. If we have a parent coming in or a worker coming in to have to present something to us, that's not the way we should be doing business. If they presented it to you or your leadership team or your principals, they come before you, you submit it to the committee with a document saying, here's another thing. There would be a line item here that said, we want to spend $50,000 to increase the arts. That's my only point. Take it as constructive criticism, not trying to beat you up. It's just the fact that here's what I'm seeing today.
I don't think you can, but that's all the story.
Well, we'll talk about that later. But the real issue is we shouldn't have a parent, a person coming down. You get the point. So I'm going to vote for it. I support it, support the arts. There might even be more when you reach and scratch the surface here to say, is 10,000 enough? What's it going to be used for? Is it, are there other inequities across the district? That's the kind of thing we want in the agenda for us. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Any other discussion? Mr. Hetzel?
Thank you. I was just curious if 10,000 was enough. That it seems to be a sufficient starting point if there's, we find, hopefully we look into this, if there's a greater need, that someone let us know. And if we have some one-time money, we can help out. That I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hetzel. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carr.
Thank you. Next agenda item, we'll go back to number two. It's a vote to approve school committee delegate for November's Mass Association of School Committee and Mass Association of Superintendents Joint Conference. Is there a motion?
We need to nominate a delegate.
I understand that. Is there a motion?
So moved.
For whom?
Josh Hetzel.
Is a motion made for Josh Hetzel? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second discussion.
Mr. Hetzel?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mons?
Discussion number what?
Discussion on item number two. Number two, Mr. Mons, number two.
Thank you.
There was a motion to recommend the delegate be Mr. Hetzel. It was seconded. Discussion by Mr. Hetzel.
I'm not going to be able to accept.
Okay.
That position based on my current job outside of this committee. But I was, I approve it if one of my colleagues would like to go.
Okay. I'm sorry?
One of my colleagues wants to go to this.
Okay. So there was a motion to refer Mr. Hetzel, to recommend Mr. Hetzel. He's unable to attend?
I know I went last year and I cannot attend, so somebody else...
Is there someone on the committee that can attend, that plans on attending? That can be the delegate for forever? Okay. All right.
Joe's going.
Okay. If someone finds out they can go between now and then, can we approve sending them? Can I make an amendment to the motion?
The motion now is to refer, I mean, excuse me, to recommend that you attend it, but what's the amendment?
Well, I'd like to amend it to not say that I'll attend it, but that if. Between now and the time of the conference, one member of this committee can go.
So Mr. Hetzel's amended the motion to suggest that if there is a member who's able to attend, the schedule permits, that that person be the delegate for the school committee. Is there a second to the amendment? Seconded by Mr. Agia. On the amended motion, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carr.
Thank you. Item number three. Discussion and vote to approve the second read of the school committee superintendent's goals is presented by Dr. Malone. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hetzel. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey, Dr. Malone, and then discussion.
The only item that we could not find a hard measure point for was the retention rate because the way the state measures it is not accurate the way we would think about what retention means. Tom, Coogan can explain more, but so we just wanted to come up with something for tonight so that we could vote on this with this one measure point is a little more flexible.
Mr. Coogan?
So the way the state calculates retention is they look at a census of all our teachers and positions on October 1 of a year, and then they look at the census the following year to see how many of those teachers are in the same position again. And anybody who is not in the same position, regardless if they're retained in the district or not, is considered a loss in retention. So last year, we made some progress and we're up at 87% according to the state's metric. We had almost the identical number of teachers retained this year according to their number, which was 650 last year and 640 this year. However, two factors impacted that. We had teachers move within the district, which caused the number to drop, and we added positions. So by adding positions, you're now dividing the same number against a larger number, so the rate drops. So I would think that we can work back with the subcommittee for the evaluation, or we can just explain it the way I would look at it, or the way I've spoken to superintendent about it. Resignations, retirements, and non-renewals, and then divide that number by the number of teaching positions we have in the budget, and that would be your retention rate. But the state looks at it a little differently, and that's why the numbers on the state website are not really a good metric to use for retention purposes.
Right. Mr. Hetzel, as the chair of that subcommittee, do you want to weigh in on that particular item?
So as far as that data goes, we understand now how DESI looks at this data. So we are able to make our evaluation based on an understanding of how these numbers are formulated. So we understand, and I believe you talked about it earlier. I think we've done a decent job recently with retention, so...
So there's a motion on the table to approve the superintendent's evaluation tool, excuse me, the superintendent's and the school committee's goals. Are you suggesting that it be amended to include what was described by Mr. Coogan in terms of how we factor in the retention rate for the district?
Yes, I would make that recommendation.
So that was an amendment to the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Coogan. Any discussion on either the amendment or the main motion?
Main motion, but you want to, do we vote on the amendment first and then, or?
Well, if you vote on the amendment, it'll carry, but if you want discussion on or question on the main motion, that's fine. Mr. Agia?
So the, what I was mentioning earlier in the 2018-19 goals, I've mentioned this now for two months, that I believe the first step we should have done when we're looking at whether we, when we're moving to the next round of goals, is articulate, here's the list of goals that we had on the chart, and here's how we did on each of those pieces. We still don't have that information now. We'd have to piece it together. I don't think that's the best way to go about when we create a goal, to say, how did we meet it or we didn't meet it? And then from there, we can create new goals. What we did is created a new set of goals, but we haven't had a real articulated document that shows what we did with the current 18-19 goals. I think that's a flaw in our system and the fact that we just allow it not to be given. With that being said, some of my concerns are the 42%, where we said we were going to, the goal that we all approved was to reach 75%. To me, that's a drastic amount. What is the new amount if we're using similar type of percentages on the district performance?
Don't know yet. Remember, the state sets the targets. I get penalized by the state no matter what, so that's why we use the same ones.
So where, the prior year, we used a criteria in reference target percentage of 75%. Where did we get that number on October 9?
From the state.
And you're saying now we don't have that number?
I don't have that yet.
But we're going to approve these tonight, or is this a second read?
We said 75, now this is approved tonight. This is the second read.
Well, what I'm saying is the second read, does that become final?
It does.
Yeah.
So are you saying you want to put the 75 back in?
Hmm?
Do you understand my question?
Yeah, I'm just going to insert whatever the state says. I don't know if it's going to be 75 or 85 this year.
But it doesn't say that in the, what we're approving.
We just use what the state's accountability rankings are. We'll use their targets for all those, those first five A, B, C, D, and E.
Right, so in the first one that says, target and improvements across accountability, making moderate to substantial progress towards targets set by DESE.
Yep.
You're telling me that last year, they said it was 75, but this year, we don't know what that is?
Said, and we said these will be available to us over the next couple of months. I don't believe we voted, when we voted on last year's goals, we didn't have their targets yet. We added those in once they came out.
Yeah, I'm only looking at the top one, the district one, and what we had for second read, because I went back to my notes. On October 9 of 18, this is what we used. So what I'm just looking at is, are we actually lowering our expectations for goals or not? And you're saying it's going to be what the state is, saying, I'm not sure what that is, but there was clearly a 75% number in here, so...
And I'm going to say it again. We're going to use the state's targets, so you're not lowering your expectations. The state targets will be higher than they were this year.
And so would that be moderate or substantial, or are those the same number?
You've got to figure that out when you make your judgment.
What do you mean, are they the same number? Are they the same number, or moderate or substantial?
No, substantial's higher than moderate.
I mean, I think that's an issue. I don't know what colleagues think, but I do think that that's an issue that we should try to address, which one we're going to go with. So it's clearer at the end, do we meet it or not? Leaving it open to interpretation isn't the best way, you know, to do that. My other concerns are along the lines of, you know, the gifted and talented and extended learning time, which I've mentioned at the last several meetings. We were told we were going to get a report, then it's now backed up to January. And then we're going to, I guess it's looking like we're going to have a two to three-year implementation? Is that what I'm hearing?
We're going to bring forward a report to the committee, hopefully winter before budget season. We've been working very hard on this for a year now. This is complicated work.
And we don't have anything to go on yet?
No, we're going to bring forward a report to you. We're not bringing anything half-baked.
Got it. The, my last question is in the, on the last page about the RPA's Pilot Evolve Academy competency in three of the five competencies. Can you explain like what that is? Is that a, how many kids in there? Is that... Because it just seems like three of five evolve competencies.
Right, so they have...
But is that not related to school?
Right, so there's, in their grading requirements, the competency-based determinations, if there's five products, what we're suggesting is that in three of them, the students will show mastery.
And that's how they're going to be graded? That's not typical grades, like that's just their typical grading in that academy?
Yep.
And is that a lot of kids, or is it...
We've got about 21 kids in Evolve. Pathway.
Thank you. I just, I do think that whether we approve this or not, we should get a list as a committee. Ask for the information. We should get where we're at, especially now we have all of the scores in and all that, so...
Right.
I think that we should just go step by step in what was last year's goals, and you might have a good reason why we didn't meet it. I'm not saying that if you didn't meet a number, that it's the end of the world. But I think we should at least go on to, here's what our update is on where we're at with it, and here's what...
Kevin, we got to 42 out of 75. It's no secret, we presented that to you tonight.
No, I don't mean, I'm not talking only that. I'm talking just about all the different lines.
So the way it works, the evaluation subcommittee met.
Yeah.
And we talked about, and we're going to present to you the tools tonight. And we talked about and agreed to that I would do a self-evaluation that includes the answers to all your questions that you just asked. And I'm hopefully going to have that to you by either this Friday or by Monday of next week. And then that's going to give you at least three weeks to go about, do your evaluation. And then the public meeting on the 19th, we'll do a public report out. And you're going to have all of my self-evaluation backed up with data, backed up with artifacts, and you'll have all that at your disposal.
I'm not opposed to that. What I'm saying though is we're approving the goals for the next year before we get that. That's, I think it's just sort of the cuts before the bar.
The way the timeline works, that's the way it works.
Yeah, I hear you. All right, I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amended motion, Mr. Hetzel?
Just on the amended motion, I'd like to ask if Mr. Coogan could just provide that information in writing for us at the time so we all understand the data and how it's going to be calculated. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carr.
Item number four, discussion and vote to approve the superintendent's evaluation tool tool, as referred by the evaluation subcommittee, presented by Dr. Malone. Zero motion.
Motion.
Made by Mr. Corey, is there a second? Second?
Came from?
Mr. Agia?
Mr. Coogan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Coogan. Discussion on a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Hetzel?
All right, so the subcommittee met. We formulated the tool, we believe it's completed. This will be the final chance for anyone to weigh in on it. If anyone here on the committee would like to weigh in on it, change anything, this is it, because the goal right now would be, we receive the superintendent's self-evaluation Friday, like he was saying, maybe Monday, and from that point forward, we'll also receive this evaluation tool, and we need to, obviously, evaluate the superintendent before the next meeting, in order to give me enough time, I would say, at least a week prior to the next meeting, so that way I can tabulate all the data, and come up with the actual final evaluation to present next school committee meeting.
Do you yield?
I yield.
Mr. Martins?
Mr. Superintendent, why is there no reference in this proposal to student learning improvement as defined by proficiencies of exceeding expectations, meeting expectations?
Because the state doesn't hold us accountable for that, Mr. Martin.
Say again?
The state doesn't hold us accountable for that. I, we use the exact language that the state's using the district for.
That's fine, but we're not the state, we're just the school committee here, and that, to my opinion, is a, an item that, as referenced earlier, to the, listening through all of the MCAT reading.
Right.
Presentation, there was no reference to student learning improvement, and with the information here, following suit, no reference to student learning improvement as well. I should think that there would be some measure of indicating that you exceed expectation growth by a certain percentage, and meeting expectations by a certain percentage, which then would result in a decrease in partial and not meeting expectations.
Right, it's on page four, Mr. Martins. Just, I hope you are still understanding that in 2017, the state changed the test, so you can't go back before 2017, and do a comparison of meeting and, meeting and exceeding, and total it up, and come up with, you know, oh, this year you were here, and the next year you were here. It's a different test, Mr. Martins.
I mean.
I mean, is this, I don't need to argue this with you right now?
Inasmuch as I'm not going to be here.
Yep.
I, for this full year, I'm going to abstain from, when the roll call is for voting, I'm going to abstain. However, all of the rhetoric that was set this evening, with regards to MCATs, in essence, this is basically the same doggone thing, and it's going to be, if you don't make any changes, like the turtle sticking your head out, with regards to what you're gonna do with elementary grades, you're not gonna go anywhere.
All right, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Martins, but I think it's been made clear to the entire people in the auditorium, and everyone's watching us, that we're not sticking our heads in a shell, or in the sand, or anywhere else for that matter. We've confronted the fact that we're not where we need to be, and we're doing something about it. We presented a plan tonight, Mr. Martins, and I'm hopeful that you stay connected, because you're holding me accountable. And I've done everything that you've asked me to do since you met me. I've built the CVTE programs, I've added Parrish. We're doing the best we can, Mr. Martins. We're gonna do better.
You know, I like, I'd like to look at data, and make determinations based on fact on there, and that last page of that document that you're holding, going from 2009 to 2019, you're relatively flat. Now, any mathematician would look at that and project, okay, there's gonna be some radical changes, in order for it to go up. Otherwise, you're gonna be flat again, with that idea.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Mr. Agia?
Just a question on the format of the, when you make the composite of these, so if we have four sections, is it like, zero, one, two, three, four, for the scoring? So, on like, the first page, it says unsatisfactory, needs improvement proficient exemplary. Is it zero, one, two, three, four?
That's how we compiled them last year.
Say it again?
That is how we compiled the scores last year.
That's how it went last year?
Yes.
The only question I had was, when it gets to the second part about the goal one, there's five sections now.
And we go.
For the performance goals?
One, two, three, four, five.
And then you'll average each?
Yes.
One separately, not?
Yep.
Just for statistical purposes.
Each row gets calculated based on all of our scores.
And then you'll somehow keep it all the same, because when you have four in one, and five in another, sometimes it's not fair. If we did, like, if you're at two points out of four, or three points out of five, and you average the score of three, it becomes a, it could either help the superintendent or hurt his score. You get what I'm saying?
Right.
It's not necessarily on a 10-point scale, let's say?
Right.
That's, I guess, maybe the goals are separate, too? Do the goals get, get reported out separate than the other pieces?
All of the data is averaged out, from everyone. Regardless, you know, if there's four, then one, two, three, four. If there's five, it's one, two, five. If there's three, it's one, two, three.
Yep, what I'm just saying is, the one that's for five, score of, out of five, that's for the professional practice student learning goal, so that's sort of on a separate. The rest of the report is all one, two, three, four.
Right.
So, you're gonna compare apples to apples, is what I'm saying when it gets done. The fives would have their own report, because they're related to the goals, and the one, two, three, four is consistent across all the other sections?
Yes.
That's, so just apples to apples.
Absolutely.
Yep, with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Mr. Corey was yes, Mr. Martins?
I'm sorry?
Your vote, Mr. Martins? Abstain.
I said abstain.
Okay. You jumped, jumped the gun, though. I believe Mr. Corey was still voting when you voted, as well. So, it's a secretary, Madam Secretary, you have it? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Item number five, discussion and vote to approve, the approval of additional FTE for Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant, a CODA, as presented by.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Agia, seconded by Mr. Coogan. Any discussion on a motion? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Number six, discussion and vote to refer the MOU Shared Indirect Cost Agreement, as referred by the Finance Subcommittee, as presented by Doc, excuse me, by Mr. Kevin Almeida. Zero.
Quick overview, we discussed it on, we discussed the MOU on September 23. We compared the old agreement that we had in place a few years back, compared it to the new agreement that we had in place. The items that we discussed were in reference to the Medicaid reimbursement, SROs, and how they're funded, and we talked about cleaning up the language in regards to law expenses. And so, with that, we referred the MOU back to the full committee for further discussion.
Any discussion on the MOU? Mr. Agia?
So, I, I'm just reading it to say, recommending a vote for the administration to go back and not accept it as is, is that accurate?
No, to go back and begin.
Negotiate it with the city administration.
That's what I'm saying, so it's sort of, like, we, there's no point in us making our statements here, because you're gonna go back and renegotiate it.
Right, you're giving the school administration some, some permission to go back and, and focus on those areas that's been presented.
Yeah, the only thing, I think that's a good idea. I know we talked in our subcommittee about the SRO, MOU, and SOP, all that stuff. I'd like to include that in the same motion, so that both of those are open for some of the discussions we had. I asked some questions, the chief gave us a letter that, I didn't really like the letter, didn't answer the questions that I had personally, so I'd like to just throw them both on the table for, to open up discussion.
Two separate negotiations.
And make that an amendment.
So, hold on one second, Mr. Agia. That, that's two separate negotiations. One is about the funding mechanism, the other would be about the SOP. Two different, two different audiences, if you will.
Two different groups.
Or two different groups.
I hear you. I just want to include it in this, because it's, this is a, an agenda item, so I just want to add it to this agenda item that we, we continue to also talk about, because it's, it's between the city and the school department.
It's between the police department?
Right, but the motion before us is on the MOU Shared Indirect Cost Agreement. So, I think what you are asking is the superintendent to continue to negotiate with the city regarding the, who they respond, who they answer to.
The SOP and the MOU.
Evaluation SOP, correct.
Yep.
Which is not part of this motion. This motion, or this agenda item, is strictly for the indirect cost.
But that's why I want to make it an amendment, so that we can have, add it to this right now, so we give direction, because it's about giving direction, so we give them direction to say, to, to also go back for that.
Right. I understand what you're asking. I'm just saying, I'm not sure it fits into what the agenda item is. Hasn't, what you're asking has nothing to do with the MOU, and the indirect cost agreement.
So, in the one-page document that they gave us, it says, the discussion continued with the school resource officers, and whether, whether it would be an appetite to fund them differently, through another method, or if we continue to fund them as stands.
Correct. That's the agreement right now. The school department funds the SROs.
Right.
We're giving the superintendent the authority, when they discuss the indirect cost agreement, to decide whether or not that'll continue to happen. Not the SOP, not who they answer to, none of that information. I, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not saying that we can't, at a later time, have that motion made, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, if you're saying it's, I, I guess, it sounds like you're saying it's, the motion's out of order, which I disagree with, but it is what it is.
Right.
Put it on the agenda, you know, in the future, we need to talk about it, so.
There's no doubt about that, Mr. Agia. I'm just saying that it, it wouldn't be a discussion that you're giving the superintendent the authority to have with the city at this point, because this is regarding the MOU. That's more regarding the standard operating procedure that we follow now with the SROs, and who they respond to, who they answer to, who evaluates them, et cetera, et cetera, like we discussed.
Yeah, I think we already had that discussion in the subcommittee, and it's.
Correct.
It's dormant at the present time.
Correct.
Just trying to get it put back on.
I got you.
I yield.
So, on the motion, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey. Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Mr. Agia, would you like to make a motion to refer that topic for a future agenda?
Sure, so moved.
Made by Mr. Agia, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on a motion? Here or none? All in favor?
Yep.
All opposed? So voted. If I can ask the superintendent to ask, that that be part of the future agenda, the SOP regarding the SROs and the forest school department. Next item is number seven, which is the discussion and vote, discussion and vote to approve the expenditure of $750,000 from the Employer Trust Fund, as presented by Ms. Almeida. There was been a motion by Mr. Agia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzel, any discussion on that motion? Here or none? Roll call.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey. Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carruth.
Item number eight, we had discussed as part of number nine, but certainly entertain further discussion on it, if there's any. Is there any further discussion on item number eight, discussion and vote to approve the Innovation Improvement Fund, as referred by Finance Subcommittee? Is there a motion, Mr. Agia, or a question?
Just a question, because we, what we did before, I was assuming nobody on the committee wants to have them report back to the committee? I guess not, right?
I don't know, is there a motion?
Nope.
Is there a motion to have the superintendent report back to the committee?
No, I can clearly see nobody wants it, so that's fine.
That's the only way I can get you the answer, Mr. Agia, is to make a motion.
I get you, I hear you, Mr. Chairman, I'm fine.
And then we'll know what the body wants to do, by way of vote.
I understand, I understand. So, do we need a motion to approve?
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Agia, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Coogan. Any discussion? Mr. Martins?
Isn't this the same thing that we discussed earlier?
Correct, we didn't take a vote on that, Mr. Martins. We referenced the fund as part of the discussion we had in number nine, but the committee didn't formally vote to approve this innovation fund.
They wanted to have the $200,000.
For that purpose, correct, but we didn't establish the fund.
So, you're taking a second vote on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 10, discussion and vote to approve the approval of jobs for two bilingual paraprofessional, and a community facilitator, presented by Ms. Almeida.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr.?
Agia.
Mr. Coogan, I'm sorry. Any discussion on a motion? Mr. Agia?
So, I'm just rehashing our conversation from earlier. This looks like there's positions at Durfee High?
Yes.
So, are we saying that there's no foundation rooms without Parrish, other than these two?
Well, there, there are others, but this specific request here is for, because of the growing needs of ELL, for the two Parrish, and for ELL, and the community facilitator at Durfee High School.
But then you asked them to say, we gotta make sure we have them in all, so do we need?
All right. So, what I'm gonna ask, Mr. Agia, as we dispose of this motion, but then a follow-up motion be that, if the administration feels that there is gonna be equity across the district, that they bring back proposals, so that it's uniform throughout the district, that every foundation classroom has both a Para and a teacher in it. If there are needs, regardless of the request, that that be brought back before the committee, if that suffices.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand, it just, this is contradictory to what we talked, heard, so I'm fine.
Okay.
So moved? I don't know if it was.
Motion was made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr. Coogan. Any further discussion?
I note here.
Mr. Martins?
I note here that it says that you have available funds from the paraprofessional line?
Yes.
Why, you're using those funds to hire more paraprofessionals?
Because not all paraprofessionals are hired at the moment, not everybody's in, in a seat at the moment.
Say again?
There are open funds, because not everybody is hired at the current time, and so, every day that there's not a Para in a classroom, it, it opens up funds within that line item.
Listen, I'm okay with that.
It's not from, it's not from not trying to hire, it's that we don't have somebody in that spot yet.
Unless the administration feels there's a need for these paraprofessionals, then there's funds available. If the administration feels that there is a need for paraprofessionals, then there's money, there is, monies already on the line, on the budget, to hire them.
Mr. Martins, so just, just to be clear, if I have 100 employees that are budgeted, I've probably gotten 95 to 99 of them filled, every day. Every day, we have openings. At this moment, at this present time, we have Para openings. With the Para openings that I have, we're trying, we're trying to fill them every day. With the Para openings I have, I have enough money to fulfill this request that's in front of me.
So, then currently, I understand what you're saying, that these paraprofessionals are paid by the hour, and if they don't work, they don't get paid?
Correct.
Okay, I understand that. So, today, a paraprofessional didn't come into work, doesn't get paid. That's available money. Now, you're taking all these available monies, and you have enough money for three positions?
Yes, sir.
Of which case, you still have enough money, then, to hire more paraprofessionals?
We have the money for those paraprofessionals, and we have the money for the current paraprofessionals that we have budgeted.
You have money for the paraprofessionals that come to work, but you're saying that you have extra money from paraprofessionals that called in sick, or they have sick leave, sure, they do, but of which case, you know, all of these, no pays for today, no pays for tomorrow, so forth, and then you get X number of dollars, to the tune of sufficient to pay for three additional people for ELL. Okay, I can understand that. What I'm saying is that you still have that additional money. If you're gonna spend it for three L, L teachers, then you could also spend that money for additional paraprofessionals. You could do that. Thank you very much, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Any further discussion, Mr. Agia?
Just one question, so, with this vote, are we increasing the FTEs in the, in the paraprofessional line item?
Yes.
But we're not, we're just spending money in, in the breakage, or whatever they call it?
Correct, correct.
That's something that I think needs to be articulated a little, I'm still in favor of it, but we, as a school committee, need to create line items and say, we're gonna have, to use your number, like, 100. If we have 100 Parrish in the line items, FTEs, if we're gonna add more, we need to get a special vote on that to say, we're increasing by three, which is, I guess, what this vote is.
But that's, but that's what I'm asking.
But it's not necessarily articulated as such, because you're gonna backfill the other people.
Correct, so what, so what, so what I'm saying to you is that we're adding positions, but because we have not filled every slot that's in the budget, we have available funding to fulfill another three positions. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Right, structurally, at the end of the year, you're gonna have a deficit, if you, if you will, in the future, unless we add more money, because when all those other people get hired as well, and their benefits, it's, it's a more costly thing than just.
Correct.
Three people. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Absolutely, absolutely. If everybody is in their seats, 100, if, if 100% of the people are working, you know, right now, going forward, it'll be more money to the budget, yes.
Yeah, and I, I just wanna, and I've said this a few times today, but I do think it's an issue. We, as a school committee, need to approve the line items in the budget. Same theory on the teaching, let's say. If you have four teachers, let's say we have 1,000 teachers, and you have 10 vacancies right now because you're filling them, you can't, in my opinion, as one member of the committee, say, we're going to take all those little monies that we had here, and we're going to add 10 more teachers to now have 1,010 line items, without a vote of this committee to increase that number.
But, but we don't do that. Anytime we add FTEs, we bring it forward to.
We've never added FTEs without coming forward to the committee.
Correct.
We always bring it forward, we cannot add FTEs without the committee's approval. So you're right about, use the figure 100, tonight we're asking for 103.
There is a caveat to that, though, and I, just for disclosure, if there's a need in special needs, because the law requires that that individual be, be provided that service, there are times in which the superintendent has made a, a decision to hire special needs individual, whether it be a para or a teacher, in order to fill that, that lawful obligation, but outside of that, I would say that the practice has been, they would inform the committee typically when they're looking to increase the FTEs.
I guess my, my just, and I think we're talking probably about the same thing, but the line that reads after review of the current budget, please note that we have funds available in the paraprofessional line item to fund these three positions. We have some current openings within the paraprofessional ranks that have provided the funds to cover them. And what I'm talking about is that if we filled all of the positions for the whole year, we wouldn't have the money, we would need additional funds in the future years.
Correct.
And that's all I'm saying, so probably what I would, what would have made it clearer was saying, this is increasing our para FTEs by three, is I guess what I'm saying. So I support it, I think it's needed, but I do, I think we need to focus on the committee having to say, with that I yield.
Any further discussion? I would just add that you wouldn't hire additional paras even if you had the ability to do so if you didn't have the funding.
Correct.
You'd?
I would, I would hold off.
You'd hold off or come back and say, we need a transfer from a line item that had additional funds in order to cover additional needs if they presented themselves?
In same situation, if I, if I had so many, you know, professionals or teachers, and for whatever reason I went, I was going to go over budget, I would let you know that I was going to go over budget.
Right, I, I think that's what my, I think Mr. Agar is asking for, is some assurances that that would be the case, because you're exceeding what's already been budgeted, that you wouldn't fill those positions if you didn't have the funds, you'd come back to us and say, we need a transfer from a separate line item to cover those, or you wouldn't fill them.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Martins?
In that first paragraph, and I remember this, that we discussed the possibility of funding for those three positions in ELL at Durfee, utilizing the Puerto Rico funding. And that is a very appropriate place to put, obtain that money, to pay for those three people, because of the fact that it would most likely help for the purpose of that Puerto Rico funding. As far as FTEs are concerned, if you hire those three, you increase the full-time, you know, FTE by three bodies. If you take that same amount of money and add by three, you know, because, I'm sorry, take that same amount of money, and you can increase the number of paraprofessionals. Might not necessarily be three, it could very well be four with the amount of money But certainly, I would support this, I like the idea of having ELA, I'm sorry, ELL at Durfee, that's fine, for the additional positions needed, I agree. But indeed, if it comes from the Puerto Rico funding, fine, I have no problem with that. I do have hot bird with the fact that, hey, wait a minute, we didn't expend all of the money of paraprofessional, because there is, you know, you're paid by the hour, and therefore, there is some X amount of so-called surplus money in that account, and we can use that. Well, high additional paraprofessionals, because the classrooms need that, need that additional help. So if, if the, if there's a motion on the table to approve this, then I will vote no on the basis of the fact that, you know, not for the purpose, but from the source of funding. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Martins, roll call.
Mr. Agar.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
No.
Mayor Cora.
The chairman?
Yes, Mr. Agar.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to fully staff the foundation rooms in the district with a paraprofessional, so that all classes and foundation rooms have a paraprofessional, and that the money be taken out of the Puerto Rican funds.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Agar, it's been seconded by Mr. Hutzler, any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Agar.
Yes.
Mr. Yes.
Mr. Coogan. Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Mr. Martins, a motion on the table, as Mr. Agar has proposed, that each foundation room in the district be staffed with a paraprofessional, he's asking the committee to consider using the funds from the Puerto Rico U.S. Virgin Islands, really fun money.
My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Cora.
Item number 11 is a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report as presented by Mr. Almeida, is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hutzler, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Coogan, any discussion on that? Mr. Agar.
Just briefly, the discussion we had earlier about how much money we have available, is there a way to tell on this document what is available?
If, if you're asking if I've accounted for all the salaries that's going to happen for the year, I have not.
Not yet.
Nope.
So we, we knew that the para one has, has got some surplus based on our last discussion?
I know that I have enough money, because I've, I've done my own projections on my own, yes.
And the other ones are in progress?
Yes.
Sounds like, the reason why I'm asking is that I know during the budget time, there was other items that we funded out of one-time monies, namely the ANET, if I recall, at 250,000?
Yes.
If I'm taking that to be the case, we should have at least 250,000 of unexpended funds here? Is that still accurate?
Yes.
So is there a plan and time for maybe the next meeting to get all of those, including those type of items, so that we can know what we have available in one-time monies?
Yeah, we can have that for November.
Yeah, and the only reason why I say it is I think we need to either put the brakes on some spending, so that we have true contingency if we need to, or figure out what we're going to do for how much money is available, but I'd like to get that, if we can, as soon as possible. With that I yield.
We'll have that in November.
Sorry. Can I ask one more question?
Certainly.
The, you got, and here the healthcare, I think we talked about that, projection, what was the end-of-the-year number for under, underfunding at the net school spending at 100%? How was state, is it draft?
About 1.8 million dollars, it's a draft, but it's 1.8 million.
Below 100%?
Yes.
Does that include what they've already given us?
Yes. That's everything, all in.
Yeah, so that means how much total then do we have?
I'm sorry?
How much do we have coming?
We should have 1.8 million.
1.8 million coming.
Another one point, yeah, all right, that's what I thought, yeah.
In order to fulfill their obligation of health insurance.
No, not just health insurance, that's overall, it's all costs included.
Okay.
So if the schools needed to be funded at 100%, they already gave us 3 million, and they're under for healthcare, you're saying that in addition to that, the end-of-the-year report's going to show 1.8 million dollars additional?
Yes.
Sure, right.
And have we talked to the city about when we're going to get that money?
We just filed the end-of-the-year report two weeks ago, we haven't had any discussions yet, the city knows, they're aware of it.
We've alerted them to our?
Yeah, I mean that?
I don't, I don't submit, I don't submit it without them knowing, we, we're on the same page, they provide me their figures, I verify their figures and submit it.
It's really shocking, because we had multiple meetings, and then we had them here, and we were told, even I think?
But that's not just, and, just to be clear, just because this isn't a city thing, it's, the 1.8 million, not just health insurance, it's attributed to transportation as well, so you, when you fold that all in, rolling forward, that, that's what created the 1.8 million.
May I please ask that we get in our Friday report, a one-page summary of what those, how you got to that number, I'm just curious?
Sure.
It's all good things, because we're going to obviously get more money, but it's all put in perspective, it's additional resources. I yield.
Thank you, if I can just ask a question, then, Dr. Malone, you mentioned 1.8 includes transportation?
Yes.
That's not a net school spending eligible item, so?
Correct, but that, but, so originally it was meant to be spent on transportation, I'm sorry, on a net school spending item, it had to be spent on transportation, thus increasing the number.
Right.
So that's the reason why.
And they were aware of that when that expenditure was made?
Yes.
That it was a net school spending eligible item, or funds that we used on transportation?
They knew that we were going to need additional funding for transportation, yes.
Okay, as long as they were aware of that, because when I heard you say that, I thought you meant that the money that was, was owed was 1.8, and it included transportation, which would be a net school spending eligible item.
What I'm saying is, the transportation issue created the additional funds.
Right, what's the breakdown of health insurance shortage?
It was a million dollars.
A million, so about $800,000 in other transportation and others?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on the year-to-date budget report? Roll call.
Mr. Agar.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
So we have some items for the, for your information, is there a motion to accept and place on file those items?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hutzler, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Martins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Next agenda item would be new business, however, I'm going to ask the committee to take that up after executive session, is there a motion for, is there a reason for executive session, Attorney Assad?
Yes, there would be, at the request of the chair, I would?
I would ask, I would ask Attorney Assad for the record to read those, the reasons for executive session this evening, and then we'll ask for a vote.
Sure. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the September 9, 2019, regular meeting of the Forest School Committee. Also, National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all government program employees, including without limitation paraprofessionals, parent workers, and clerks, the Forest School System that are paid for federal, state, and state grants, and are represented by the Forest Republic Schools, government programs, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also, National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security officers of the Forest School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also, National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, specifically litigation-Bureau of Special Education Appeals, Number 1910545, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the committee. National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Forest School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational behavioral and physical therapists, physical therapy assistant, licensed practical nurses, certified occupational therapy assistants, school administrative managers, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forest Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Also, National Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Justine Costa, instructional support liaison, Gina Ferrera, instructional support liaison, April Mallow.
Attorney Assad, may I just interrupt, I'm sorry, it's Gina Faria, unless mine is an error?
Oh, it's Faria.
Is it Faria or Ferrera?
Faria.
It's Gina Faria. I believe, I could be wrong, I thought you said Ferrera.
Okay, sorry about that.
I just want the record to be clear.
Thank you for correcting it. Gina, Gina Faria, instructional support liaison, April Mallow, instructional support liaison, Ameriko Mata, ESL Community Facilitator, Gary Leet, media editor/instructor, Alex Mello, webmaster/instruct, production assistant/tactician, Kenneth Pacheco, chief operating officer, Lori Madura, human resource administrative assistant, Megan Suze, human resource administrative assistant, Dylan, Dylan Camara, data technician, Aaron Dunn, computer technician, and Scott Cabral, network technician, that we will reconvene, there may, may not be statements at that time.
Is there a motion for executive session?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hutzler, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Corey, roll call.
Mr. Agar.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
This committee will stand in recess for executive session. I'd like to call the school committee back to order, Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Agar.
Here.
Mr. Coogan.
Yep.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Hutzler.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Mr. Martins.
Here.
Mayor Cora.
As a result of executive session, are there any motions to be made this evening?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the executive session committee minutes for September 9, 2019.
Motion made by Mr. Hutzler, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey, roll call.
Mr. Agar.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
Any other motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement as negotiated with the government program employees in the Forest School Committee.
Motion's been made by Mr. Hutzler, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey, roll call.
Mr. Agar.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the settlement between the Forest School Committee and the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, Case Number 1910545, as negotiated.
Motion's been made by Mr. Hutzler, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey, roll call.
Ms. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Forward School Committee and the Forward Educators Association.
This motion's been made by Mr. Hetzel, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey, roll call.
Ms. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract as negotiated between the Forward School Committee and Justine Costa, Instructional Support Liaison.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey, roll call.
Ms. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract as negotiated between the Forward School Committee and Gina Faria, Instructional Support Liaison.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey, roll call.
Ms. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract as negotiated between the Forward School Committee and April Malo, Instructional Support Liaison.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract as negotiated between the Forward School Committee and America Motta, ESL Community Facilitator.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, roll call.
Ms. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Cora.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract as negotiated between the Forward School Committee and Gary Leet, Media Editor/Instructor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, roll call.
Ms. Agia.